Okay.
Okay.
I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is a special meeting of the city of, City Council of the City of Holiday Island. I'll get it right here. It's June 8th, 2023 at 8:45. Let's start with the, uh, plan to the latest. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Wes.
Okay, Councilmember Gumas.
Here.
Can't hear you.
Councilmember Owen.
Here.
Councilmember Graves.
I can't hear you.
Councilmember Coon.
Here.
Councilmember Mills.
Here.
Councilmember Pittman.
Here.
And Mr. Mayor.
Here.
Okay, everyone's present.
No sound.
Okay.
There's no sound.
We have a-
Can't hear you.
We have a visitor here that would like to make some comments under the public comments section. And just to expedite getting him back on the road if he has something too important to do. I would make a change to the agenda to move public comments up to the item number five. And so with that change, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda as a member.
And made a motion to approve, Lynn seconded it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Alright, uh, you're up.
Oh, thank you. Turn microphone on, we're speaking. I need to hit a button here.
It's a little green button.
Little button.
It's that green key, push it.
There we go. Alright, I'm Richard Williams. I'm from over at Alpena Green Forest, Arkansas. I live out in the country. We're having an issue that is not affecting you all here yet, but it has a potential of it. That is a wind farm coming in. They call the Nimbus Project. It is proposed still with lots of objection from the neighbors out there. The only ones in favor of it is the wind farm itself and the neighbors who have leased their property. A lot of them unknowing even what the lease is. As I told the quorum court back in the April meeting, they, I said, "You all are all old enough. I quite well imagine that all of you have purchased a vehicle at some point in your life and have financed it." Those finance agreements usually are about three, four, maybe five pages long. And if anybody disagrees with me, I very seriously doubt if any one of you have read that contract prior to signing it. You looked at the numbers on there and that was it. These people have signed contracts for thirty to thirty-five years on their property. That's thirty-seven pages long without seeking any advice. They just saw the dollars and not a whole bunch when you look at how many years it's over. And they have tied up all their property. To give you an issue of it, uh, and also the company has already proposed that once they get this in, which will be the first, if it's completed, successful attempt at a wind farm in the state of Arkansas. They have tried them before with public dissension and therefore pulled out. And they came in under the wires on this one here trying to do it secretly. Uh, one of my neighbors, she is taking the ball and running with it, setting up Facebook pages, et cetera. She's come up with one here to give you an idea, especially here at Holiday Island. I am familiar with you. I used to have the convenience store out here some ten years ago, my wife and I. We had it for about twelve years, thirteen, I think. I'm from, so I'm familiar with the way people out here are educated and believe, and you all are educated. Uh, the his, this is particular property. Is it 302 West Hampshire Road, Maro- M-A-R-O-A, however you pronounce that name, Illinois. In 2011, that particular property was appraised at $700,000. In 2016, with wind terms looming, it sold from 700,000, it sold for $450,000 five years later. Today, it is surrounded by the wrath of wind farm. And in 2018, its appraisal value went from $700,000 to $374,200. And that's just one example of what they do. Uh, the wind farms themselves, John Cross, I'm familiar, everybody knows him. He ran, had an article in the Eureka Springs Independent a few weeks ago, adamantly against them. He says they are not good for anywhere. They, the only reason they exist or perpetuating is because of tax, federal tax credit dollars, which will cease and they're only good for ten years. The wind farms are good for thirty to thirty-five years. Warren Buffett, multi-billionaire, the same opinion of them, and he owns them. And yet he said without the tax credits, he wouldn't have any. Just that thing. To get you some update on it, uh, the Eureka Springs Independent newspaper here, if you'll research it back into February, Becky Gillette has written many articles on it. And she has given all three sides. That is, the proponents of it, Scout Clean Energy is the name of the mother company, the people against it, the property owners around it, which is myself and many others, and the county. But she has given a good opinion, I think, of non-bias on it, if you want to read up on it. It goes from February of this year to current, her articles. Uh, to give you an idea of how much they're wanting it, the Quorum Court meetings have been packed full here since March. And much objection to the point that the county judge does not even allow very much public speaking on the issue because the courtroom's packed and everybody wants, has a negative point. Every meeting, March, April, May, the proponents have been asked, that being the windmill company themselves, and they are there and recognizable. The last meeting, he asked three times after he limited the number of people against it, "Is there anybody here who hasn't said anything for or in favor, pro windmill?" He looked dead at them and could see it. Not one person from the windmill company stood up in favor of their own project at three meetings. Period. They say, they ran in the paper how a great opportunity this is for Carroll County. I told them, I said, "If it's such a great opportunity, why wasn't it broadcast, billboards on the newspaper? Why didn't it sneak in?" And the only reason we even know about it, like my wife reminded me last night after the lady who put all this together told me, she says, "Richard, if it hadn't have been for Trish," that's one of our other neighbors, "calling you one night, we didn't know the windmills were coming back, Richard." "What's the story?" I said, "They're not." She says, "Yes, they are. They just stopped. We wanted to know who owned that piece of property up there, Angela Stevens' property, because they need to lease some property to get their equipment in." I said, told her, I said, "Well, I'll get on in the morning. I'll get on and find out and I'll get back with you." Well, got on the internet, looked it up. True enough, it was supposed to be gone. So I called Becky Gillette, never had met the lady before. She says, "Richard," says, "No, it's, that's a done deal." I said, "No," and I told her. So she said, "I'll get back with you in a few days." Less than two hours later, she's back with me. "Richard, them damned blah, blah, blah are at it again without anybody knowing. Had it not been for that gentleman stopping my neighbor to ask who owned the property, we would still not know about it to this day." And the Quorum Court, the practical Quorum Court meeting in March, which they already heard there's going to be a big interest in it, they had a meeting the week before, the Quorum Court meeting. It was the county judge, his assistant, county attorney, representative of windmill company, and their attorney. The, when people wanted to be there, the news media wanted to be there, no. It was stated it wasn't an open meeting. It's not that it was, it was a closed meeting. No, it was not a closed meeting. This is from the county judge's administrative assistant. It wasn't a closed meeting. It was just not open to the public. That's exactly the verbatim in the newspaper, her quoting her. But anyway, I know it's three minutes here. I've overpassed it. If there's any questions you all have, I'm not going to take any more of your time with also the respect I got for letting me be gone. Is there any questions I could answer for you?
I got one.
Yes, sir.
What can the Quorum Court do?
Ha, thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm sorry, I missed that one.
I didn't set you up because I'm very much in favor of it, so.
In favor of windmills?
Yes. I, I just, I moved here five years ago from Oklahoma. I saw what it did to the economy. Created jobs, new educational opportunities.
Okay, that's it.
Some of my family owns land that they lease in Illinois. This company's got these forty projects though.
Okay, well, we have, we have a very full agenda this morning, so I don't want to take up too much time. You can go ahead and quickly address-
Answer that one there.
That question and then I think we'll-
They can pass an ordinance which we've requested that they're almost refusing to do, not to not have windmills, no wind, not, not have a wind farm, but put regulations on them that protects the adjoining property owner's property. That's all we ask. That's what they can do. And other states, other counties, there's none in Arkansas because there are no wind farms in Arkansas. But other states, especially Kansas where they have them, they have put in regulations where it has to be so far from the adjoining property's property line to protect that adjoining property owner and their families. That's what the Quorum Court can do.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
I'll thank you all for your time. Appreciate it. Cut the mic off.
Please.
There we go. Alright, thank y'all again very much.
Alright, we don't have any minutes to approve any ceremonial recognition proclamation. We have no reports. We have no old business. We'll move on to new business. First thing on the agenda is ordinance 2023-013. Ordinance, updating ordinance 2022-007, nuisance abatement ordinance. Lynn has a motion to approve ordinance 2020-013.
Make a motion we approve.
I'm second.
Ordinance 2023-013. Ken made a motion to approve ordinance 2023-013. Lynn has seconded it. Um, now we'll, we'll move on to reading the ordinance. Lynn, you pretty much drafted the final version of this. So if you would, I would just go over the highlights and, you know, just the, the changes itself, certainly.
The reading, reading of the ordinance. An ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance 22-7, nuisance abatement and property maintenance regulations for the city of Holiday Island in its entirety, declaring an emergency ZPM for other purposes. Whereas reasonable and enforceable regulations of nuisance abatement are necessary in order to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the property owners and citizens. Such regulations further enhance the value of the properties so regulated. And whereas Arkansas Code annotated 1454901 empowers cities to order the owners of lots and other real property and cut wage, remove garbage, rubbish, and other unsightly and sanitary articles and things upon the property, as well as take, uh, take other measures stated therein and thereafter. And whereas Arkansas Code annotated 1456203 empowers cities to order to remove or raising of buildings or houses that in the opinion of the city council have become dilapidated, unsightly, unsafe, unsanitary, obnoxious, or detrimental to the welfare. And whereas the city council, the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, finds it necessary to adopt reasonable regulations in order to protect the health, safety, and general welfare of the property owners and citizens. And whereas the city council, the city of Holiday Island, further finds it that is necessary from time to time to modify and update said ordinance, they'll therefore be enacted by the city council and city of Holiday Island. Section 1, that ordinance 22-7 be repealed in its entirety. Section 2, that the nuisance abatement and property maintenance regulations attached here to its exhibit A incorporated herein by reference are hereby adopted. Section 3, that all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herein are hereby repealed to the extent of the conflict. Section 4, that the provisions of this ordinance are hereby declared to be severable. And if any section, phrase, or provision shall be declared or held invalid, such invalidity shall not affect the remainder of the sections, phrases, or provisions. Section 5, the emergency clause, the city council hereby determines that this ordinance is necessary for the abatement of existing nuisances within the city of Holiday Island. Therefore, emergency is declared to exist, and this ordinance being immediately necessary for the preservation or protection of the public peace, health, safety, and welfare of the city and its citizens shall become effective on the date set forth herein above. It's best to approve signatures. The ordinance is highlighted here with some changes that, just in light red bold font color, just a format change in the font. There are sections that have been updated with bold font that formatted as well as some italic. So just scrolling through, I just changed some references to external documents. I made them italic. You'll see those as we go through them. And what's bold is when we refer to a section, you know, inside the ordinance itself. And down, um, down to section six, some more changes in the formatting only, other fonts. Capitalizing in section eight, the words resolution. And down here in, um, section J, just highlight the fact about the references to violations of section four. Section nine, no changes. Ten for definitions is the first change. And we've added the definition for squatting. The definition for squatting has been added, the unlawful occupancy of any building or piece of land. References to this ordinance. And then down in section seventeen, I believe is the only other textual change. Section seventeen, nuisance list, originally ended with number sixteen. Item seventeen has been added. Human, it's, what we're talking about is these are defining what ordinance or what, uh, nuisances are. The enumeration should not be deemed or construed to be conclusive or limiting or restrictive. So it's a list of things that are defined as nuisance. Number seventeen, human waste and or contents of portable septic systems upon any land ditch, waterway, or surface pond. And then eighteen has been added. Parking or storing campers, boats, trailers, vehicles, storage containers, building materials, or other equipment on an unimproved residential or commercial lot is prohibited. That's the balance. Those three changes are the only ones that are textual changes in the ordinance. I'm sorry, down just at the end of twenty-one. Twenty-one is the prohibited occupancy section. And we've had this short paragraph. Squatting, camping, or in any way occupying a recreational vehicle, camper, motor vehicle, tent, or any temporary protected structure on any lot, parcel, or public property within the city boundaries is strictly prohibited, except in designated managed campgrounds or as allowed in other city of Holiday Island ordinances. We moved, we moved the parking that we had, uh, received from Dan as a suggestion up to seventeen.
Oh, you did?
Yes. Yeah, it's in the, it's, I'll roll back on the screen to see if we put it.
Okay.
We made it item eighteen.
Oh, you made that up.
Because the parking doesn't have to do with occupancy. It's just a nuisance of parking these kinds of apparatus on an unimproved laws.
Okay, so it's good.
Yes, but it's, it's an item eighteen in the nuisance section seventeen.
Alright, we'll now open it up to comments on the changes to the ordinance. Let me start off by saying that, you know, the whole purpose of this was, um, well, it, it was, it was born out of a little bit of frustration with, uh, when we're, when we experience a violation, something that we know clearly isn't violation of what we intended our ordinances to cover. And we think, and we start thinking in terms of, how do we write up a notice of violation to give to the property owner, um, and/or eventually issue a citation? We find ourselves struggling a little bit to find direct verbiage in our, in our ordinances that prohibit that particular activity. Uh, in some cases, what we have to do is look at what we allow based on ordinances. And if that isn't, if what they're doing isn't allowed, then it's presumed to be disallowed. And that's a, a, a difficult way of backing into enforcing an ordinance. Uh, we have recently had, um, you know, a little bit of a spike in incidences where people were pitching tents on vacant lots and actually starting construction of small structures without any permit or, or anything. Uh, we have two recent occurrences where people have parked old campers on vacant lots. Um, we assume with the intent of occupying them. So, um, that's what, what generated the, the need to make these modifications to the nuisance ordinance where those types of violations are very clearly stated so that when we're writing out a notice of violation, we can simply state the ordinance and the section of the ordinance that's being violated. Is there any other discussion on the changes?
I have to apologize. I did not see this change come into my email, so it's not on the website.
Alright, well, yeah. It was evolving right up until the last minute.
Okay.
And what was on the website is, you know, substantially what, you know, the final draft.
Just moved it.
Yeah.
Just moved that one.
So, any other discussion?
Yeah, I've got one question. Uh, I saw in there where, I can't remember where, but talking about a fine of, uh, yeah, fifty to five hundred or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
No, no less than fifty, no more than five hundred. Where, you, you mentioned something at the last meeting about there's a violation and the citation goes out, but I cleaned it up. You may not do a fine. Where can that, does that give the authority to anybody to weigh with that?
Uh, it's, I, I don't know. There's nothing explicit in, there's, there's no exact language that would, that would do that. Uh, I guess it would be up to the, you know, the district attorney, or the prosecuting attorney. We, we met with the prosecuting attorney last week and discussed all different kinds of scenarios. And we agreed, you know, we agreed in principle, at least, that our objective is to get problems fixed, not to, um, to raise money, you know. This fines are not supposed to be revenue generating. They're supposed to be an incentive to evade problems. And so if, if someone is issued a citation and before their court date, they mitigate the problem, we would notify the prosecuting attorney. And I guess it would be up to him to decide if he would go forward with it and still seek to, uh, to collect the fines or not. But I would guess they wouldn't.
Isn't that very typical of all kinds of activities? No matter what, issue a citation, appoint us to get it done, and if you don't go to court, then issue a fine.
Yeah, but one of the ways to avoid court is to pay the fine and mitigate. I mean, I, I just, I don't know.
I don't know. I, I, I thought we discussed that. Our whole objective is to get it done, not, you know, not to collect money. And that's, that's the punishment for not doing it, that like, like issuing a traffic warning instead of the traffic ticket.
But an issue of warning, that would sample a citation if you're not going to court? I mean, I'm just going, one man's opinion.
But if the, if the problem is mitigated, then we are enforcing the ordinance. If the objective is to get the problem mitigated, not necessarily collect fines. The, the process is that we write the citation. It gets turned over to the prosecuting attorney. And the, and a court date is set. After that, it's in the hands of the prosecuting attorney and the judge. And, uh, you know, if they choose to continue to pursue it because they think that there's something to be gained from, uh, pursuing the citation even after the problem's been mitigated, I suppose they will. But quite frankly, with a crowded, you know, docket, they probably won't do that.
I had raised a question, sent an email, and Lynn responded. Yes, Lynn, was that a proposed change?
No, it's, uh, your issue was, uh, some property has a pile of debris on it and it's being added to. It's been going on for about a year. And I suggested that our ordinance in section seventeen, bullet number three, covers that issue.
Okay.
That was my suggestion.
Okay.
Alright, let me use that as an example. There's a pile where they were going to build a house on Holiday Island Drive. Very hard to view. I think you and, and like, I don't know, David was a boy, went and talked to the, the realtor or, and they said they should remove it. That's been a year and a half ago.
They did find they burned down the tree top.
Like, very recent?
Yeah.
Yeah, about, about two weeks ago, the fire department burned the trash pile.
Well, so see, to me, that would have been an opportunity if we had then issued citations to not even consider removing the plant.
Any other discussion? I have to call for a roll call vote then.
Okay, uh, councilmember Gumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Owen.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Coon.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman.
Aye.
Ordinance approved, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, the ordinance approved since there is an emergency clause. Uh, entertain a motion to approve the emergency clause. Make a motion, we approve the emergency clause. Ken made a motion to approve the emergency clause. Do I have a second?
Second.
Lynn seconded it. Any discussion? Roll call vote on the emergency clause.
Councilmember Gumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Owen.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Coon.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman.
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, the emergency clause passes, so the ordinance is effective immediately. Alright, uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, we have a vacancy on the Board of zoning adjustment. I have asked Randy Rolfe.
Rolfe.
Rolfe. Rolfe. Um, if he would fill that position, um, and he has agreed to serve. Um, Randy is, uh, has a background in, uh, construction and is currently a member of Rotary. And, uh, I would entertain a motion that we appoint, uh, I would entertain a motion that city council approve my appointing Randy Rolfe to the Board of Zoning Adjustment.
It's on and to approve.
Linda made a motion to approve Randy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Barb seconded it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Councilmember comments? During non-scheduling, our regular meeting will be the week after next. I'll be trying to get the agenda out on that early next week. Uh, and no other special meetings. And we have a workshop immediately following this meeting. Any announcements? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Ken made a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Barb seconded it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Special meeting is adjourned. And now we will move on into the workshop. Special meeting is adjourned, and now we will move on into the workshop.
Linda. I can't get on to do.
Just waiting to receive.
Well, let me.
Did you interrupt that to me, is that what?
He's, he can't, he's on the dock, sorry, and I.
Yeah, I.
You can't get in.
Your wifi won't connect.
You have to use the wifi password for here, not our office. It has to be the high secret.
We're using the high-sid wifi here at this.
I can, I can hit it this morning.
Right, well.
So check and see on your, um, on your settings.
I'm going to call this workshop to order. This is a City of Holiday Island, pre-council workshop for June eighth. It's nine twenty, so we're already twenty minutes late, uh, but that's okay. This is, uh, being a workshop, this is less formal than a regular meeting, however, um, we do still want to, you know, um, maintain some degree of order so that we can get through the, uh, through the agendas. We may not, you know, we may have packed way too much into one workshop, so I'm going to start with the, uh, and when the agenda was put out, it wasn't intended to be in order of priority, but I'm going to take the liberty of setting priorities here and talk about short-term rentals first. So Linda did the basic research on that, so I'm going to turn it over to Linda.
I have one question. The original, uh, agenda stated that we're going to have an update on the, uh, Aaron Wade on the progress on the, the, uh, work enforcement.
And we'll do that at the City Council meeting.
All right.
Can you pull up the first document?
The survey?
Jerry, do you want to address this? This was your document that you put out there, um, down the survey of cities.
Is it placed?
Yeah.
Short-term rentals. First off.
Well, it's basically, uh, going from newspaper articles and, uh, city ordinance and things, what, uh, other towns are doing. A lot of that is changed, I mean, it's a very fluid issue. One issue comes up, I try to address it, it affects more people. It addresses all the issues like parking, occupancy, business licenses, fire inspections. So, I mean, that's basically what that is about, other cities, they know of those hot springs, silo.
And down below, you said that VRVO and Airbnb, uh, help let people know, or help actually share how many they have in a particular community.
Yeah, and one, one thing that is fairly common is that they require, uh, someone to be at the property in thirty minutes, maybe. So I think it's very important that something that we draft could include that.
Can I pipe in also? I just want to make sure that you kind of know, like, if you have a rail on Airbnb, you might also have it on VRVO, you might have it on another, so the numbers do seem higher than they really are.
I know a lot of our property out here is listed, like, many places.
Yeah, so I, I have to go on that.
Um, yeah, okay, anything else you want to add to that, Jerry?
Uh, my, just one.
Okay. Anyway, uh, the next item on the, what's the next document?
Good.
Okay, uh, this is just something I drafted, giving a little summary of, um, what we might see in an ordinance that we would draft. Uh, first of all, a short-term rental is a rental of property for less than thirty days. And it's also, you know, we, they're done by different terms, VRVO, Airbnb, or just vacation rentals, uh, and, or short-term rentals is generally the phrase they use in the ordinances. The purpose is to regulate local short-term rental businesses in order to ensure they integrate peacefully into our city neighborhoods and to the extent possible will not degrade property evaluations or cause adverse effects on the appearance of peace and quiet in our neighborhoods. Short-term rentals can sometimes pose issues with noise, traffic, vandalism, and trash. And the constraints in the state of Arkansas that we're facing with an ordinance is, with few exceptions, short-term rental property must be held to the same standards applied to other residential property, and short-term rental renters must be held to the same standards as long-term renters of residential property. But we can regulate how the business is managed. And so typical components of short-term rental ordinance of the cities that I've looked at, uh, first of all, a business license is always required in all of them. And usually it's by property, there is a single license required for each property that person owns, and, um, so they can't get by with owning, you know, five properties and having one business license, it pertains to the property itself. And so you have the owner information, the location of the property, and the local representative contact information, which is Jerry pointed out, that's probably one of the main things you want. Uh, because when you get complaints to the city, you want to know who you can call to solve the complaint. Usually, uh, another component, I would say in all cases, that there is some sort of inspection that is done on the property, whether it be fire or safety, the fact that they have posted rules and regulations that pertain to the property renters, look at their parking adequacy, we certainly have other, uh, ordinances that regulate parking for everybody, you want those, uh, short-term rental people to know that those property, those parking ordinances pertain to them. And, uh, there's also maximum occupancy rules that are written in Jarzoni code, uh, those properties have to follow as well. And, uh, of course, with the fire and safety, you want to make sure they have fire extinguishers, uh, fire safety ears, smoke detectors, things like that, and, uh, that if a fire worker arrives, that people can get out, there are exit routes to get out of the property and such like that. Other, another component I've seen in several is that filed written complaints to the city from neighbors can cause revocation of the license. In other words, that will put them out of the short-term rental business if we get enough complaints, and they're, you know, shown to be factual. A lot of times, there's a hearing involved to review the complaints and listen to the neighbors.
Linda?
Yes?
Did you, you talked about some entrances that we could regulate, did you find anything in Arkansas about a private owner who's not listed with VRVO or Airbnb, rented out, regulations?
I don't understand the question.
Well, I'd like to, if I, if I was a part-timer and had my house here.
Yeah.
But I don't have a property manager, but I list it as.
Then you're responsible.
Okay, but some states, there, there, there have been some restrictions.
I don't think it makes any difference whether you're written it yourself or you're going through an agency, you're all.
No, I, I.
Well, what do you mean? What, what would be?
I didn't have to do some research, I thought there was legal cases in Arkansas that.
Well, I didn't mention it was Arkansas, but there have been some, and.
I know there has been in Oklahoma.
Yeah.
What, what came up?
Well, if they're not listed, if they're just, like, I own a house, and I decided to rent it to somebody on my home, not through VRVO, not through Airbnb, they don't, they not allowed any restrictions to be placed on that. That's not in Arkansas, but it's in Oklahoma, but I thought we had something similar to that here, but I didn't.
Well, you still have to, you still have to comply with our ordinances here, or.
I don't think so.
Individual residences.
Yeah, for an individual resident, which you have to do anyway.
Yeah, so that's good.
We're adding additional restrictions.
What I've seen in some of the other states is that, uh, they don't have a business license, require a business license.
Yeah.
Some of the other.
Because they're not in a.
They'd still have to comply with the same ordinances that I would as a homeowner.
Yeah.
But not the additional requirements like a business license and like.
That's the main thing of, of, the issue is there, the business license.
Well, the business license and any lodging tax that might be.
Yeah, plus from a practical standpoint, it'd be very hard to identify those.
They're renting it out, they're, they're supposed to pay sales tax. They're supposed to charge sales tax, collect it, and report it to the state. I don't know how.
Maybe for purposes of the workshop, we can just note.
Could be an issue, yeah.
Know and follow up on that, see if there are any limitations on it, but if, if there are, my thoughts on it would be, if it's, um, if it's not your permanent residence, um, and, and you rent it up for any period of time as a short-term rental, then you're operating it as a business.
And if it is your residence, maybe there are other laws that get involved too.
Yeah, if it, if it's your permanent residence, you're here, you know, seven months out of the year, and the other three months you rent it up, you know, maybe you're not a visitor.
But that is something to check, I agree.
Yeah, let me, let me see if I can do, and I'm trying to, my fuzzy memory, I'm trying to remember a couple of cases that came up in Oklahoma, but that's been fifteen years ago, so let me update that, see if I can figure out what, what problems that might cause.
Oh, and back, back to the inspections, another thing I think they check on is, um, like, are you registered with the state as a business? Are, are you collecting sales tax, are you registered with the F I, or submit a sales tax resume? Things like those things also are probably checked on. So again, uh, filed written complaints, uh, you cause a revocation, so you have a process to handle complaints, um, but they're complying with solid waste ordinances, uh, signage, a lot of, uh, the ordinances I've seen say, you know, you cannot have a sign in your yard saying, this property is for rent, or something like that, or, or that you're renting it. Now, they do allow, uh, in some cases, a small sign, uh, at the entrance, that, like, making the cottage or something like that, a lot of them do that.
I know, I can think of two properties right now in Holiday Island that have a very discreet little sign at the end of the driveway that basically says what it is, you know, Mockingbird Retreat or something like that, you know?
Exactly. Those are, those don't seem terribly offensive.
No, no.
And, and the main thing is this local representative availability, now.
Big, big.
One ordinance that I was looking at said within three hours, thirty minutes, maybe kind of tricky to get someone who can be here on the spot in thirty minutes.
That thirty minutes.
But three hours certainly seems reasonable. And that there are also fines for violations, revocation conditions usually written into these ordinances. So I don't think we need to go through particularly the ordinances, but I did pick out, um, the one in Fayetteville I thought was very good, it had all these, uh, things in it, it would be one to perhaps model after, or the one in Mountain Home, which I also made copies of, um, it was real short, it was only like two pages.
I like that.
That, that includes all the whereas, character, so, so, um, so I, I didn't like the one as well in Hot Springs, it was very complicated, and, um.
Man, there are probably thousands of properties in that.
Exactly, yeah.
That'd be very.
They have a lot.
Especially if it's a hot spring building.
And also, interestingly enough, uh, the Fayetteville one is the one that they included short-term rental ordinance within their business license ordinance as a subsection of the business license ordinance, a special case of business license. And so I thought that, that would be another interesting way to approach the issue too. But even then, even there, that's, uh, Fayetteville, like I said, short-term rentals only takes up three pages. So, you know, it's not, not terribly complicated.
Fayetteville's been one that's, they've made several changes, uh, just about every new, lesson on the issue.
I thought it was well-written and understandable and covered most of the high points.
I guess there's a, there's a couple of, not necessarily suggestions, but points I wanted to make, you know, one, one very specifically about the local contacts, because we've already had problems with that, where, um, after, um, I believe it was Damon Henke sold his business to a company called Vicasa, um, one of their properties on State Line Drive built a little, a little garbage can stand at the bottom of the driveway, um, and, um, that all by itself, you know, probably wouldn't, you know, we, we probably wouldn't have done anything about it, but they, they built it basically out of pallets and stuff, and, uh, and it's propped up on rocks, and, uh, it never stays, uh, standing vertical, even if you drive by it today, it's, it's better than it is sometimes, but even looking at it today, it kind of leans like this, you know, and it just, it just looks bad, you know, and, uh, so, and, and, but when you call Vicasa to try to talk to somebody, at least the time, the one time I tried, the only people you get to talk to are people taking reservations to rent the property. There was no way for me to contact anybody that actually was responsible for the property locally here, so that definitely has to be part of the, uh.
Damon said that when they took, took, bought his business, that they retained a couple of his people, these contacts here.
The, uh, I drove over there to his business, and there was one lady working in the office yet, and, um, she was the, the only employee of Damon's that was not hired by Vicasa. She was just there kind of posing books and stuff, but she explained to me how, how it was going to be set up, that they took all the properties and divided it up into groups and, you know, an individual was going to be assigned responsibility for a group of properties and stuff like that, but she didn't have any names or any, anybody for me to contact, so it, it, you know, it's just. But she didn't have any names or any anybody for me to contact, so it it, you know, it's just something that definitely.
See, I I would plan for three hours. It's too too generous.
Yeah, I guess.
I was the president of a condo association before I got wise and bought a house. And and I mean, I had Damon on speed dial.
I even think it's too generous.
Sorry.
I even think it's too generous, too generous.
What what do you think is practical then?
Well.
I would.
I would say an hour.
Now.
That's what I was thinking. I mean, you you hope it would be somebody locally or Eureka or whatever. But I mean, if it's Rogers, like he'd get here within an hour. Yeah, an hour within Rogers or Fayetteville.
We can come up with something reasonable, but I think it's mandatory we have that.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Sure, I agree.
I agree.
What do you want?
And as far as the like the fee costs that I saw written into these ordinances, they're not terribly unreasonable. You know, fifty dollars sometimes.
Yeah, let me let me make a comment about that though, and I'm not advocating for a particular fee, but I'm just explaining this the reality of our situation here. Um, most cities have a city sales tax. So they benefit from having short term rentals.
Excellent point.
Based on the fact that they get sales tax revenue. In some cases, huge amounts of sales tax revenue from VRVOs. We have no city sales tax, so the only sales tax benefit we get is our share of the prorated county tax and stuff like that 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 we get as part of our general revenue. Um, we also don't have a city property tax, so we don't benefit from these properties one way or another, regardless of who owns them, uh, from a property stand uh tax standpoint. The district benefits because it's productive property. It pays assessments. It buys water and and pays sewer fees and stuff like that, so the district benefits from it. And and gets, you know, revenue from use of the amenities. However, purely, you know, putting blinders on and looking at it from a bit from a city perspective, um, we lose about two hundred dollars a year in revenue on every property that turns over from a permanent resident to a VRVO because, um, almost all of our tax revenue is based on permanent resident population.
Exactly.
Based on the census. So every time a house sells, like just recently, a house up the street from us sold from a permanent resident and now to VRVO, you know, we just lost two hundred dollars a year of on that on that property.
Yeah, I think you just make the case for having uh the ability to license um, short term rentals and have a lodging tax.
Yeah, but the lodging tax would not affect our. Correct. Our current tax.
Yeah.
As long as it will spend that on.
We would definitely need to confirm that before we did anything.
Right.
But it's our understanding that a special purpose tax or a special tax like that would not affect our general sales tax revenue.
Nearly all the cities uh that have this ordinance for short term rentals and have short term rentals do have sales tax. So they're on sale tax.
One thing we have to keep in mind is that lodging tax, um, there there are restrictions on what you could use that money for. Lodging tax revenue cannot go into the general fund.
But at least it supplements your total budget where you can not spend that money on that that parks, recreation or tourism.
Use that money.
Well, I've heard it referred to as the heads and beds tax. So, uh, anything that, uh, in general, I think, anything that would promote or benefit um, the the lodging industry. So recreational opportunities, you know, they could probably go towards parks or something like that.
Pay that fee for Nana.
Advertising and promotion. I think you can you could put it towards advertising and promotion.
Okay.
Maybe stretch it to the streets, improve the streets.
How does how how does Holiday Island, are you ever gonna have sales tax, city tax? Because that way, I mean, how does that work since now it's a city?
Right now, we don't, right now, we get a portion of the county sales tax. Because we don't have a city sales tax, we get a portion of the county sales tax.
Which is based on population.
Can't base on population.
Divided by the number of residents.
And I understand that, but like will you ever make a city sales tax? Will you ever?
If it becomes more than the amount we get from the county.
Yeah, the 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 problem is up until now, we haven't had enough commercial activity in Holiday Island, you know, to to be able to generate more from our own city sales tax than what we would be giving up from our share of the county sales tax.
Although I think we need to continue to check on what that amount might be every year or so.
Yeah.
Just.
Having to handle.
You were able to get a a fairly good estimate when we were running the incorporation study, right?
And Lynn and I just took a second look at that here a couple of months ago. Based on a little different way of figuring it, that ended up about the same as we had figured six, seven years ago, that it wouldn't pay. We might, we might receive about what we're receiving now, but in addition to the county sales tax, then our residents would be paying the local Holiday Island tax. So we'd be paying additional Holiday Island tax for no gain.
Yeah. Are are VRVOs now paying, uh, since we had that zip code issued, uh, will they pay hotel motel tax to Eureka?
I think so.
God, I hope not. That'd be a shame.
I mean, I don't know about that. I know that they pay, you know, they take it out and they pay everything. I don't have to do it.
They're paying somebody.
Do you get to see how they charge or?
I do.
The records they charge?
Mm-hmm.
That might be something to look at. Someone could help us figure out what's going on.
Yeah, I don't wish I'd be.
Yeah.
Because I don't think because I'm not having to deal with the financing here.
I've kind of switched over to the lodging tax uh stuff, and I did have a couple of documents in there that are very interesting. If you want to get into those now.
Sure.
Okay, can you pull up the first document there? This will show you the A and P tax that is collected from various cities in Arkansas. And for instance, um, go down to Bella Vista. Uh, they collect, uh, uh, this is the A and P tax that you're talking about, the hot hotel lodging restaurant tax. Uh, Bella Vista assesses a two percent uh on their sales. Uh, Bentonville has a two percent. Eureka Springs has a three percent. Fayetteville has a two percent. Harrison even has a three percent. They don't particularly deal with tourism that much. Um, Hot Springs has a three percent. They're a tourism place. Jonesboro, which I don't consider a hot net of tourism, has a three percent. North Little Rock, theirs is three and a half percent. Springvale is two percent. So that's just a variety of ones and um.
Jonesboro may not be a big tourist center, but they have the university there, so they have a lot of hotel business based on the university.
And the first part of this document, if you go back to the front of it, uh, it says that the Arkansas gross receipts tax is six point five percent that is charged on lodging. The Arkansas, then there's an Arkansas tourism tax of two percent on top of that. And then if there is a local sales tax, it varies between five, point five and three point five. And that would be, in our county, it would be point five because that's the county sales tax.
That's right.
Which is, I might go ahead and say this, our county sales tax rate is the only sales tax we have in Holiday Island. And point five percent is, we are one of the three lowest counties. In fact, we, there might be one that has zero, but uh, three counties have point five percent sales tax or less of the practically hundred plus counties in Arkansas.
So I think in Eureka Springs, they have the state, the six and a half percent state sales tax, the two percent Arkansas tourism tax, the uh.
Plus three more.
Eureka Springs, local tax, and then a lodging tax.
Yes, plus a three percent lodging.
So I think it comes out to fourteen and three quarters percent.
Probably wrong.
I'm I'm a little bit gray and fuzzy on what, you know, what the taxes, what there there's, I hear different terms like advertising and promotion tax, and I think if you have an A and P tax, you have to have an A and P commission.
Yes, you do.
And the money has to go to them and it has to go towards advertising and promotion. Then there's also, I think, some cities have a restaurant and lodging tax. But I think it's different from the A and P.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's.
You think it's the same thing?
I do.
Okay.
That would be.
We'll we'll check the state laws on that for sure.
Now, that would be the C A P C commission in Eureka.
And all all of these cities have an A and P commission of some sort. They might call them different things. But I do think you can spend that money on parks, recreation, recreation, anything dealing with recreation.
I know it's a source of constant turmoil and controversy in Eureka Springs. But they have like a two million dollar budget or something like that.
It is, it is huge, yeah, huge. And we'll never be that big at all, so. Um, this other article is about Airbnb's and VRVOs and how they manage uh collecting the tax. Uh, apparently Airbnb has a contract with the state of Arkansas to do the collection of the lodging tax. And I know, as well as all the other taxes that the state assesses. And um and the city, I think, believe the city sales taxes are included in that. Um, VRVO, uh, currently, as I understand it from this article, does not collect those for anything in the state of Arkansas. There is, this article is about a big schmuck row going on between Cylon Springs and VRVO, uh, because Cylon Springs really wanted VRVO to collect all their taxes, so they didn't have to worry about it. And so I think they're trying to get a contract with the state of Arkansas, but I think VRVO only wants to do it on a state level, on a city level, so basically it kind of depends on the state to get that contract together. So Cylon Springs is trying to to get that done apparently. This was a, this was in May of twenty one. It might have changed since then, so.
But Airbnb and VRVO are two, are companies.
They are companies, agencies.
But they don't, they don't represent a hundred percent of the potential renters.
So for instance, if we had a an A and P tax on short term rentals, we would have to have some process uh to enable collection of that tax from every short term rental. Now, it could depend on Airbnb sending us a check in the mail with the ones that they had every month or some process like that. But for virtually every other kind of rental, you're kind of on your own. You have to make sure that the landlord uh submits tax returns, and that's why you want to make sure that they are set up in the state of Arkansas as a business, that they are registered with VFA for taxes and stuff like that. That's part of the process of regulating them.
Uh, then I think that 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 sheet that I had, there there was, I can remember that somebody had a arrangement and mentioned a entity that did that.
Let's see, I've got a copy right here. Let's see, it's that first one, short term rental workshop that Jerry sent for us. Cylon Springs passed hotel motel tax, but grappling with how best to collect it. Um.
We have one with amendments that we did that.
There they are. That's the only one I see on there.
Maybe Damon Damon mentioned.
Damon will know. Damon knows a lot about this, you know.
Well, it would seem to me that uh, they would have to have a license, and part of that license, they would have to prove that they were registered to collect sales tax.
Show me your 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 search search.
You know, any short term rental should be collecting state sales tax and that two percent tourism tax.
Because they have to submit to the state of Arkansas.
And that submittal might be a document that we would require so that we can see that our percentage is being also collected and redeemed to the city. Just redeem them from their statement.
Because it, you know, the, I think that the likely process is that that everybody would, you know, regardless of who's collecting the tax, it would go to the state. The state would collect the tax and then um distribute it to the proper cities, just like general sales tax. Um, but we we would not get an itemized statement from the state that said that they got this much from this entity and this much from this entity and stuff like that, so.
But you're talking sales tax, which we don't have that.
Well, even lodging tax.
That doesn't go to the state. That goes to the A and P commission. That goes directly to us. We, and from what I've read, we have to set up a process to collect that individually from the owner.
From the owner or from like Airbnb and Virgo?
Or or those, if they're if they're the agency in charge of it.
Okay.
If they are doing the billing or doing the collection, I should say. Because they're they're an online internet company, so they collect through the internet versus a local business that might collect with a large park here.
Like with Virgo, I have the opportunity to see, um, collect the taxes or not. I don't want to deal with that, so of course I let them do it. So I would collect, you know, taxes on anything.
I'm sure that's an incentive for you to use those kinds of agencies actually.
And the extra protection, you know.
Yeah.
They they also have an extra, I mean, I have renters insurance too, but they have an extra protection. I don't want it to happen.
I think that's a valid incentive to really use.
Yes, I wouldn't want to do it myself.
Yeah.
So do we have to require VRVO to have a business license in Holiday Island?
No.
But if they're the agent operating and managing properties, that makes them a business.
They're just.
Okay.
They're not managing. I manage it, you know.
But they're managing your reservations and your finger collections.
Yes.
They're contracted for part of your service.
If they had a, like, the copse has a location in Eureka Springs. So I'm sure they have to have business license to operate in this.
Or a board.
Any other questions?
No, but I could see that that's where it's tricky is when you have a company like the Casa versus like just a individual like me, you know, so. I can definitely help answer any questions. Then he said he he and I couldn't get a hold of him, so. We couldn't find a local client.
I think the purpose of the workshop is, did you say whether we want to move forward with this or?
Yeah, I think that was gonna be my next step was, are we ready to have someone draft a?
It's not gonna be done next month, but you know. It's not gonna be done next month, but you know, it should be done this year.
Can I also just say one more comment?
Sure.
You know, like the fire inspections and all that, I mean, I don't have a problem with that, we have, you know, we have to even list on Airbnb and those sites that we have, all those things provided, smoke detectors, you know. Of course, we're gonna keep it up to date because we want people to come back and keep it nice. And that's where it gets frustrating with me, is that you can have a long-term rental. Somebody arrived over here, and there was a long-term rental that was here, junky cars, you know, I think they sold drugs. They moved out, somebody bought it, became a short-term rental, so, you know, it's better. It's better now, you're keeping up with it, it looks nice, it's not junky cars. You know, we do have, um, you know, we don't try to cram a bunch of people in and have a bunch of parking issues or anything like that, like, it's good, reasonable, and. So there's, which is good, there's also good.
I, I think they're, I think they're good for our community, personally, I want to say pride here.
Yeah, we are.
I mean, we did do.
And I don't mind, I'm sorry.
Make sure there are no issues.
I don't mind these regulations, but I know some cities did, you know, like, they put some crazy regulations on it. And it was like, you know, you're not even checking a real business for these issues, you know? Like, you're not, anyways, it just gets frustrating, so.
Where sort of that comes in is where there's a housing crunch, trying to regulate where residential areas.
And I understand that too, like, you know, we didn't talk to them, and they're like, you know, eventually there was a cap, you know? We can only allow so many, I don't have a problem with that either, I think you can be a little bit saturated.
And, and that is another valid point, I should have mentioned, uh, several of these cities, um, not sure if I saw it in Fayetteville, I know Hot Springs is adamant to have a cap, because they, they, in fact, they have amended and amended several times their ordinance to, on this cap issue.
I, I thought about that a little bit, but I, I think there's a market saturation factor there though too, that, you know, I, I don't, personally, I don't see a lot more properties going over to VRBOs in Holiday Island because I just, I just, I don't have any data to prove to support this, but I just, it just seems to me that we would be reaching a saturation point here, uh, as far as ability to keep.
Supply and demand, right?
Ability, yeah, ability to keep all these properties rented.
Yeah, that's gotta be a factor.
Some of these houses that are being turned over into VRBOs are very expensive houses.
There are some.
If you don't have that thing rented every weekend, you know, nine months of the year, you can't possibly justify that kind of.
Five bedrooms, windows, view, you know, mansions out here.
You know, I think that, I think there's a lot of people jumping into this business because they think it's easy money or something, but.
Not many.
I think that there's gonna be a saturation point and, you know, and I think that point will be, you know, before it's really detrimental to Holiday Island.
Well, and, and you gotta figure, you know, our recreation facilities are a bit dated, I may add, and uh they're not that fancy, our arena is not that big, it can only hold a certain capacity. But we can't accommodate a huge influx of tourists here.
But we are, what we are is.
It's a nice addition to the area.
What we, what we are is centrally located, we're centrally located in Branson and Eureka Springs and numerous other things.
At the bell, Fayetteville.
And you've got the mountain views and all that.
So you can rent a house here for probably less money than you could rent in Branson or someplace else and use this as your base, and uh, you know, the downside of that is, is that they're not spending their money here. They're renting a house here and then running off to Branson to spend their money.
I think, I think the best bet is to see how we can incorporate, um, you know, this industry, this is our main industry.
It is our industry.
Our, that virtually only industry in Holiday Island, so we need to make the best of it. And make, make peace between our neighborhoods and the tourism industry. Figure out how to integrate it in the right way so that everybody's happy and everybody lives a great, has a great future out of it.
And do we get a lot of complaints, like with boys?
On, on some of the short-term rentals, we do.
On some of the bigger ones?
Yeah, where they, they, you know, four, five bedroom ones, and, and some of the very nice neighborhoods.
Yeah.
It's like our zoning laws come into that.
The, the zoning is, we can't regulate them differently than a residential. So that's the Arkansas statute limitation we have for zoning, we can't say that this, we can't regulate and say this can only be a zone for only your single family.
So like, like that seven bedroom on the lake side that had twenty-five cars lined up down the street. Our only recourse against that is to enforce.
The parking system.
Would it say that why for what some call what a class two short-term rental where it's a non-resident, there's nobody living there, it's just strictly a short-term rental, is that still a residence?
It's in a residential area.
But I would think if that owner has a new plan, they're not.
Well, and that's.
Are they ever there?
And, and your illustration called a class two, that's some city's definition of a kind of rental, so we have to make that distinction if we want to, in our code.
But the Fayetteville ordinance doesn't make that statement.
Now, that's my understanding that sale lodging tax or something like that can just be approved by the council and doesn't have to be voted on in a local election. We would not, we would definitely need to confirm that too. Familiar with that?
I think this would help us peacefully exist with our uh short-term rental uh housing in our neighborhoods if we are good with some code enforcement there. Because if we have this process where neighbors can complain, they air it out in a hearing, uh, it's a fair process to all, and we can, you know, uh, have the owner mitigate the problems.
And, you know, kind of indirect answer to your question, um, the residents in Holiday Island are not at all bashful about calling me if they have a problem. And I haven't, I haven't had one single call yet this year at least about VRBOs or short-term rentals. So that doesn't mean there won't be one or two over the course of the summer.
Exactly.
But generally speaking, it's not been a problem. Last year, we did have problems with um motorcycles in Oak Point where, you know, the, the renters would come in at two o'clock in the morning on their Harleys and feel obligated to, you know, rev the engine three or four times before they shut it off.
That's clear in his throat.
And we did have that one incident down on Lakeside where, where the fraternity booked the house for the weekend and they had seventeen cars. But that, even that was kind of a one-off thing, and uh I know the people very well, we're good friends with the people that live next door there, and they said there hadn't been any issues with anymore. So basically, they, the, the, the neighbors talked to the owners and they took care of it themselves, so they're, they just.
My neighbors will always say, hey, this, well, they never do, there's never been an issue, but I know if there was, they would call me too. I have something on there saying, you know, be respectful of the neighbors, you know, like, try not to be, like, after ten, you know, try not to be, people do come here, so.
And that would be one of the rules you have posted inside the residents, right?
Yes.
It's gotta be quiet after ten o'clock.
Yeah, I, I think we, we do have to be cautious too about uh if we have a situation in a neighborhood where there is excessive noise and it's driving the neighbors, the permanent residents crazy, that uh, you know, I've heard some say, you know, well, I'm gonna be forced to sell my home to an Airbnb company or somebody who only does Airbnbs, and then they, they feel like they're not gonna get full value for their property because of that, because there is nuisance going on in the neighborhood.
The, yeah, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I don't play the importance of that concern, however, um, you know, what, what one person thinks is a nuisance noise, you know, may not be the.
If my neighbors complain about the same noise, I think we've got it wrong.
Well, yeah, yeah, but we've had situations here where um it didn't, didn't happen to be about VRBOs, but it happened to be about outdoor music like down at the farmhouse, where, you know, a normal person would not have considered it to be offensive or annoying, but some people that, you know, lived here for twenty-five years in dead peace and quiet, um, you know, it was a change to their lifestyle, so.
Well, we can't do anything about the farmhouse because they live outside of our community, outside of the city boundaries. If they live right across the street from you, however, we can do something about it.
No, I'm telling the farmhouse restaurant.
Oh, the farmhouse restaurant?
Yes.
Okay, well, I was in the farmhouse because I'm one eighty-seven. The farm, the farm, right?
Yeah.
Depends on whether you wanna dance at nine thirty or what or not.
Okay, so we're, we're all in agreement to move on to a, to the, a phase of developing an ordinance and presenting it for uh, for review and comment.
Okay, I was wondering now, in a unrelated, but somewhat related issue is long-term rentals. Is there a need for some sort of oversight of those, like inspections or something? Some of these places I saw where there was a need where properties weren't maintained, but tenants were afraid to say anything, that they would get kicked out, that not have a place to go, and do we need to look at those?
Are you talking about my apartment complex or?
Well, any long-term, you know, any long-term rental. So some places, they were talking about what inspections every three to five years or something like that.
Eureka Springs, the Eureka Springs code enforcement officer, um, in, recently, not, not last week, but recently, presented the city council with a proposed inspection criteria checklist for rental property, not just short-term rentals, but all rental property. And um he wanted them to consider uh creating an ordinance or including that in an ordinance. And uh I thought it was a really good idea, it just had some of the basic things in it that, you know, like electrical and just, I mean, just some basic maintenance, uh, minimum standards for rental property. And um the city council seemed to be receptive to it, Mayor Berry seemed to be receptive to it. I was, uh, I was kind of waiting to see it in a more um developed format before I, you know, I grabbed onto it, proposed that we honorably adopted, cause I thought it was a really good idea. And, you know, and it was good for the property owner and for the renters, because uh if, you know, if the, if the building inspector is gonna come in and do an inspection, you know, he could give the, the property owner a copy of that checklist, you know, a week ahead of time or something like that, so they have an opportunity to go through their own property, maybe mitigate some of the minor problems before he even gets there, and uh kind of establish a standard for minimum maintenance. So I thought that was a really good idea, and uh, but even the newspaper article, it had part of the list on page one, and then it said continued on page two, but it wasn't continued on page two. Editing problem, I guess, but um anyway, I would suggest that we wait, let, let, let Eureka Springs develop that thought a little bit more, and then we'll see what we wanna do with it, maybe adopt something similar.
I think, I think we uh should have some rules about um the kind of conditions that renters are forced to live.
Some of our, you know, some of our bad code enforcement problems in Holiday Island are absentee landlord rental. All right, um, we touched on business licenses, um, but business licensing encompasses more than just you know, rental property, uh, so I would like to spend a little time talking in more general terms.
Okay.
About business licenses and things like that.
Okay, uh, we know through that one pretty fast, go to that first one first time, yeah. The first uh document that I put out there was, and I just put this out yesterday, if anyone has seen it, it's very short. It says, um, the purpose of a business license, and this was just in my own mind, to ensure local businesses are known to the city, adhere to fire code, and operate safely, uh, conforming to other laws of the city. A license provides the owner name, contact, location of the business for emergencies. During licensing, the city can verify the business meets zoning codes as other appropriate licenses and certifications normally required for that type of business in order to protect the public's interest. Fees charged for business licenses will go into the general fund and reimburse the city for the licensing process and the city services used by the business and its customer. You can expect that a business is gonna have more traffic than a residence, so it impacts the roadways. Uh, you wanna make, I mean, if you have a business in the city, it would be nice to know that someone has checked that they have appropriate certifications, like if they're a restaurant, that they have a health inspection certificate or what have you, that they have, you know, adhering to fire code, that there's a safe exit should be a fire, that they're not gonna burn down a neighboring business's property, uh, things like that. I mean, it, it seems reasonable to require a business license, the fees are usually fairly nominal. It's once-a-year process, and I think they have to, you know, you have to check whether they've had any violations or not and what have you. Going through the components typically in the business license, um, if the renewal frequency is annually, at the beginning of a given month, some of them do January, some of, some of them do middle of the year. The fee basis, it can be a single fee, I've seen several varieties here, there's just a, a single fee for everything, or it can vary by the type of the business, and in the case of, who was it, this was Eureka Springs. They listed probably over a hundred different types of business, each of them had a separate fee. It was weird.
We don't wanna go there.
I don't, don't wanna do that. And, and in a, a lot of cases, uh, if it's a business with more than a single proprietorship, that they have employees, they will tack on an, an addendum for employee, so it kind of, it's based on the size of the business then, you know? I mean, I, I see it as being a size basis, so.
So would, would business license be for, I mean, we have a lot of businesses that come into Holiday Island from Eagle Rock and.
You mean set up a shop here?
No.
Are you talking?
I, I guess.
It has to be a location.
It's an occupational license for plumbers and electricians uh versus a business license.
Yeah, uh, several of them do have occupational licenses, um, uh, also home businesses, home-based businesses. I think if you look through, I forget which one it was, I think it was maybe the Fayette. I think if you look through, I forget which one it was, I think it was maybe the Fayetteville one. There, there are just all kinds of variety out there, it seems like. There's no standard, but you can choose to, uh, require a license for them or not. There's lots of exemptions in some of these ordinances for home-based businesses or the type of home-based business. Churches get an automatic exemption, it seems, and, um-
Or, or outfits like, um-
For like Wes's business?
You know, for like, uh, electric-
He might be exempted.
Yeah, like White Lightning Electric or, um, HVAC companies or something like that, that reside outside of the city of Holiday Island but do work in the city of Holiday Island. We can require that they have a business license. However, the state law prohibits, if, if they have, by state law, if they have a city out, business operating permit for one city in Arkansas, that's good for all cities in Arkansas. So if, you know, you can't make them get fifteen or twenty or thirty business licenses because they're working in many cities.
What about a single proprietor, plumber or electrician just working on his house?
That would be a business here.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we wouldn't be a business if we just a plumber or-
I guess we'd have to decide, I mean, if-
I wonder, I mean, if they're charging sales tax at the business? Counting sales tax on their, certain thing?
My reason of concern was when we had the hailstorm in February, and we had thirty different roofing companies come to town and start soliciting people to, to protect the citizens, that somehow we didn't have a process to ferret out the guys that weren't legitimate.
I think that's a-
It's not a license, but maybe just a permit. You have a permit to put a roof on a house in Holiday Island, and that permit would require that they show that they have proof of insurance of who they are, where they are, they're paying their taxes, all that kind of stuff. Maybe no fee, you just have to have a permit.
I think they sometimes call that a business license.
It's just a one-time permit, like we had a hailstorm.
Right. I haven't heard of any complaints of, you know, of some roofer taking advantage of anybody, but if it did, we'd miss an opportunity to help protect them.
And, but, and most legitimate companies, um, will call and ask. You know, I get calls, I got a call this week from a HVAC company that had a job lined up here in Holiday Island. And they, they wanted to know if they had to have a business license or some sort of permit, and I said, "Not at this time." But legitimate companies, um, will usually call and ask if they hadn't done business here before.
And last year we had a call from a solar panel company.
Well, I, I think, I think Lynn hit on the main point, uh, why we might want to license businesses. And so that we could provide that, that barrier, uh, to protect the interests of the people that live out here, that we've at least checked them out a little bit before we allow them to operate in Holiday Island so that they're not getting scanned.
And for purposes of the eventual ordinance, um, I think the takeaway here is is that we have to define what we're calling a business.
Yes. Which is great.
Well, and I'm wondering, I take myself now back to the comment that someone, if they're licensed in the city, they're okay in all cities. I'm licensed by the state. And I've never yet heard of anybody that say that CPAs had, didn't have a city license or say they're terminators. You know, would-
I didn't see a lot about that in the ordinances either, so maybe-
Right here, Fayetteville. Any person or non-government entity who's engaged in any trade or occupation requires federal state licenses and operates out of a physical address within Fayetteville shall be required to file with the city for a license.
Well, Fayetteville doesn't require that.
And for CPAs, there'd be an extra fee because-
Harbor barriers. Cause we know you have money.
I think Lynn's point, uh, Lynn makes a very good point. But, uh, I mean, Pat can tell you, uh, like in Oklahoma, we have a hailstorm every other week and a tornado every other month. And, I mean, just people that come in from Texas and, uh, I was on the council-
Sure we can put a roof on that house. Sure we can put a roof on that house.
I can tell you some stories that you would, would not believe.
You know, we, we had, we, but I can't even remember exactly what we charged, but they, they had to get a, uh, I don't know if you can call it, if it was a permit or a license or-
Even my adjusters, when they went on storm duty, like if I brought them from Tulsa from out of state to Oklahoma City, they had to, had to have a temporary license or a temporary permit declaring an emergency, but, you know. That's different than a business that's located here. They would have a business license and then a permit, especially like roofers and stuff. They're just notorious. I had some claims in Tulsa that, uh, a five-year-old could have done a better job. It's unbelievable. For a lot of money.
Well, going on-
It's just, it's just what we have to keep in mind.
Well, and how can we enforce getting all these permits?
Well, that's enforcement's the next step. Get it first and then enforce it later.
Well, along that line, I was just thinking now, after the pandemic, we've got so many people now that don't work in an office anymore, that work from home.
They're working for a corporation at home.
They work for a corporation, but they may be employees or they may not be employees. That's the next question, you know. A lot of them can be independent contractors now. So is there gonna be a distinction if you're treated for tax purposes as an employee or an independent contractor? How are you gonna know?
That's a tough road, and I've also had many claims for that. And even the courts have trouble distinguishing a independent contractor from an employee because there's social security implications, workers' comp implications and all that. That's, I don't think we wanna tackle that.
We have a lot of independent contractors out here, I'm sure.
And some of them aren't, even though they say they are.
You have contractors that work for these large companies at, at, they're a contracting company, in other words. They, they assign the person to a company to work, to do a particular accounting job or an IT job. And, uh, so there's that variety of independent contractor, which is not independent, they're working under an agency. But, and then there's also the one that you own a sole proprietorship or an LLC in your own name and you work. You, it's your own company and you're, you're hiring yourself out to these companies in St. Louis or wherever your basis is. They're not, they're not local, they're not working for a local entity at all.
Well, I have had or have now clients that are both ways, you know. Some are employees, some are independent.
And you know, that should-
Uh, we'll have to do some work on defining that.
So it'll, it'll just be, we can see what other cities do.
Yeah, there are some, you know, some things we can say are clear definitions, like if you have an EIN number, you're a business. Or a nonprofit, and we can exclude nonprofits from pay and fees, but I don't know that we would exclude nonprofits from registering as a business.
Actually, one, one ordinance I saw charged nonprofits five dollars. Probably for the effort it took to administratively register, but it wasn't anything.
Or someone, if they have rental property in someplace else, would manage it from here. Is that, is, is that gonna have to be licensed?
It'll be something to think about.
Yeah. Well, like Linda has done and like we've done extensively in the past, uh, we don't have to reinvent the wheel from scratch here. There's many other cities that, you know, we need to look for, uh, you know.
But just our discussion makes me think also that if we were to implement a business licensing thing, uh, we're gonna need to come up with a document that, that tells people when you need a business license and when you don't. And I've seen that done, the city of Tonnee Town has such a thing, and the city of Fayetteville has some such a thing on their website, where they, they, they have, they proactively advise, "Do you wanna start a business in Tonnee Town?" You know? How to, how to, how to license your business, or, you know, they have that information for people. When do you need to license your business and when don't you need to?
Yeah, I, I may have, I may or may not have said, as me and you all, to you guys about a similar subject in that, um, even after we get our ordinances codified, digging through all of these ordinances to try to figure out what the answer is for your particular problem, for, for an outsider, is very, very difficult. Because it's even difficult for me sometimes to find, you know, somebody will call with a question, and it'll take me a half hour to read two or three of our ordinances to, to come up with an answer. We have got to do like a lot of cities have done, um, you know, have Q and A pages or something like that, or, you know, if this is what you're doing, you know, this is what you need to know kind of thing. And to, to be able to, cause it, you know, eighty percent of the questions are about, you know, the same things.
Right.
So, um, we should be able to do-
There's always gonna be the one-off question that you have to go dig up the answer.
And you can, you know, that, that's okay if it's, if it's the twenty percent that you have to do research on, that's fine. If eighty percent of the time people can help themselves, that's, that would be great.
Yeah. But back to the, the list of what you put in this business license ordinance, another thing is we can check to see if they're adhering to the zoning, like based on their location.
Which is very interesting, cause we were, you know, I would have never even, I, as mayor, would have never even thought twice about moving into that space up in the park and, you know, is that, you know, a violation of our zoning ordinances or not? And yes, it is.
We're talking about the city, moving its locations in parks.
It's currently not permitted.
Yeah, currently not permitted. And we'd, as we'd pulled the trigger on it, it would have been a violation.
Yeah.
So, anyway.
Do we need to talk anymore about the, the business licenses or anybody having other issues?
I, you know, I think that, I think the business license and the VRVO thing or the short-term rental thing are kind of joined at the hip.
Right.
And we're gonna have to do, um, both of them. I don't know, Wendy, if you wanna, you know, champion both of them?
Sure.
Okay. Well, we've accomplished what the workshop needed to, somebody could volunteer to do it. All right.
Like you said, we have enough model ordinances, we can-
Yeah. Are we trying to draw up the Tonnee Town?
I've investigated, there's no text in the Arkansas statute that says we have to pay them anything.
But it might be good for us to make a field trip to Tonnee Town sometime and find out if that's really who we want to be.
I wanted to attend their council member meetings, but the same nights we have ours.
Oh, that's sad.
It would even cost us that.
And I certainly have no problem with plagiarism.
Yeah. It's not plagiarism, it's honorably adopting.
There you go.
Uh, next on my priority then would be animal control, because I get more and more and more calls.
That is, that is one of the hot buttons out here.
I got a call this morning, some of it is, you know, typical, you know, not, you know, not really bad stuff, but then you, you hear about, you know, dogs attacking people, dogs attacking other animals. And I had a woman lives on Twin Peaks this morning call me right before this meeting, pleading with the city to do something about an animal control ordinance. This was the second or third time she's talked to me about their neighbors across the street have a, have a dog or dogs that run loose, and they attack and kill everything. And, uh, they were consuming a baby deer on the front yard this morning that they had run down and, and, uh, and killed.
Dogs?
Dogs.
Domesticated dogs?
Domesticated dogs.
That might be a bit silly, yeah.
And, um, so, um, this is, it, it, I can tell you it's gonna be one of the most difficult things that we, we will ever, uh, attack as far as enforcement is concerned.
Well, there's some neighborhoods that people are kind of living in fear of their own life, I think.
Yeah. Or at least that they've been forced to fence it in their own yard to keep out other people's animals and stuff like that.
I think, I think if we get an ordinance and enforce it and find some people for, uh, not keeping their dogs on the washes and not playing them around.
Yeah. So Ken and Linda, I think both have been working a little bit on this, so I'll turn it over to you guys to see what you come up with.
I took a shot at this about five or six months ago, and at that time, we did nothing with it. I had kind of stayed with, I did not see the enormity of the problem. I go by, you know, what I read on Facebook, and it seemed to me that most of the comments on the next door, etc., had to do with people having strays show up at their house, or they lost an animal. And I, I have not seen anything relative to vicious.
Nothing dogs is getting to be a big problem out here?
It's always been a problem. They've always come to, uh, North Missouri, come over the line and drop them. It just, they figured that somebody will take care of them. I spent a lot of time talking to the animal control officer in Maryville Springs. He's a part-time, it's a part-time job, and he's a police officer, I think, yes. Part-time. He was, I tried to enlist him in helping us. He basically said he was not interested in that, he had a whole workday on it. But they had, I looked at Eureka Springs Animal Control Ordinance, which is embedded in the municipal code. It's quite lengthy, it's, uh, well segmented, and you can pick and choose what areas you wanna, you know, get into. The, and in addition to that, they have animal control, they have a kennel where they, uh, keep the dogs that they pound. Uh, I didn't think we wanted to get involved in that, so I went to the director of the Good Shepherd and found that if we were gonna, we could enter into an agreement with them that they would house any animals that we threatened and put them, you know, as, I don't know, there's a period of time that they'll hold them, you know, for somebody to come and claim them, uh, and then they will put them up for adoption. And I like that a whole lot better than, that it's an no-kill facility. I don't, Eureka Springs is a, a kill facility, they want to keep them in the kennel. I, I, I don't wanna become part of a kill facility.
You're talking about those kennels that are police department, actual family?
Yeah. Uh, they do, they do pass some animals on to the shepherd. I talked to Cole yesterday, and he said he would be more than willing to sit down and discuss any kind of program we wanted to set up.
This is the guy from Good Shepherd?
He's the director of Good Shepherd.
His name was Cole?
Cole, I don't, I forgot his last name. But they, I thought that these that they came up, you know, any animal that you brought to them, they will charge a hundred dollars for processing it, you know, they do a, uh, complete health thing and, uh- and they would charge us twenty-five dollars a day for three-day holding period at which time then they would process them to the kennel.
So our cost would be a max of three, Benny?
Yeah, I, 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 you know, if, if we could work this through them, I, I think, and, you know, we can fluff it up as much as we want, but I think, I think we could initially start off with maybe a litter twenty-five thousand, you know, twenty-five thousand a year. I, I don't-
How do you get twenty-five thousand dollars a year out of a hundred dollar process?
It's a hundred and seventy-five for three days' worth.
Well, how many dogs, how many dogs do you pack over?
It's a hundred and seventy-five bucks for three days.
How did you figure the twenty-five dollars?
Well, we, we ain't figured out how we're gonna kill it yet, okay?
I just wondered.
I haven't got Good Shepherd to, but own up to the tail, you know, I'm looking for somebody to come and pick them up.
Yeah, I said, Ken and Cole, what they're, what they're talking about is predicated on us getting the animal to them, right?
Right, at this point.
That's the cost.
Okay.
I mean, a hundred dollars or a hundred and seventy-five dollars, that's a reasonable cost.
And I, I-
We're gonna collect it and get it over to them.
I figured if, if, you know, again, it's gonna be like anything, you know, initially it'll be a surge and then, then it'll be a sustain. Once you get a handle on it, it'd be minimal, but, you know, three, four animals a month, I would think. The, there are not that many in Eureka either. And I could get some statistics from that. Cole said he, they are now processing people, individuals within Holiday Island, you know, stray shows up their place, they take it to Good Shepherd. And he said he would give us some statistics on how many of those there are, but-
The, I talked to a woman just this week that, she lives up on Starlight or someplace up there. And there's been several dogs dumped up there lately and she, she collects them and she, you know, feeds them and everything and has been taking them to Good Shepherd, but they, she said that this week Good Shepherd was full and couldn't take any more animals. So she ended up, she had, she had a litter of puppies that she was taking care of, plus a couple other dogs.
Um, I don't know whether, you know, the dumping of animals should be almost some kind of a waste game.
They'll never catch them.
No, they'll never catch them.
Yeah, so gone.
We can, we can, we can build something into the ordinance that says what the penalty would be if we catch them, but the, the, the odds of catching somebody-
I think at a minimum, I, I, I would kind of reluctant to get into the licensing, but I think we'd almost have to have some kind of registration process to, you know, to, to locate owners of animals. But anyway, uh, and I guess based on what you're all are saying, we would have to make a kind of provision for, uh, there's separate pol- policies for vicious animals. But I, they're well documented, uh, ordinances for all these things that, you know, we can pick and choose which, which way we wanna go.
I think the county actually has a vicious dog.
Huh?
I think the county actually has a vicious dog ordinance.
Yeah, but they won't enforce it here.
A lot of luck given.
I know, they won't enforce it here, but we could see what it is and maybe-
I spent a lot of time where I look for commissioners trying to get county to help us with the vicious neighborhood. Again, I mean, it, I, you know, I, I think anything that we do, we, you know, we're gonna start off at some level and, and work with it to see where it goes. I didn't, I don't see it as a real, I don't, again, you know, the, the, one of the other issues is are we not putting them in the leash law? You know, where, which is, you know, requires a lot more leasing.
You know, I, I think, um, what we really want is that people have control of their own animals if they're out loose. And there are, I mean, people can train an animal to have control of it. So if, if you visibly see that they don't have control of that animal, I think that's when you could say they're violating laws.
Well, you know, that's, that's when, you know, that's-
Some people don't like to leash their dogs. I personally do, but-
Well, I do mine too, but I mean-
But, you know, I know there are people that have trained their dogs so thoroughly that they won't, they won't get away from them.
Well, the, the leash law states that, you know, you either have them on a leash or you have them in your visual control. I mean, it, it-
Okay, as long as it has that clause, I think it's fine.
Any of them, I just need to say that. I, I, you know, I, I don't like to see us continue, you know, get too much bureaucracy involved in these things where we, you know, where we get, you know, we gotta get a license every year and, I don't know. But I, I can see some benefit from some kind of registration because a lady driving around our neighborhood one, a couple weeks ago, she had a dog in her front seat and she's trying to find out who he belonged to and, and, you know, and he had a collar on, he had a tag and he had a guts. I said, call the vet, the vet. Well, you know, you get a, you get a, you get a rapey, you get a rapey shot, you get a, you get a little thing and it comes from the vet there and then that's registered number and you can tell you-
Usually if you put that on the dog's tag, on the dog's collar, you want someone who finds that dog and called the vet so you can get the dog back.
Yeah, I, I, I think this is something that we can do. I, um, and again, I, considering how we approach it, you know, I would say that minimum, you know, twenty-five thousand dollars per, per year. And there's no, there's no revenue. You ask for revenue, the fund that, there is no place. I mean, it has to come out of the general fund. And, and this, another thing, one of these days we're gonna have to own up to it. You know, as we expand the services of the city, we're gonna have to have funding to do it. And our only option is a property tax. And we, and if we came in with our budget, we've got, we've gotta do that in November. So, um, but I think-
Well, I mean, several times today we've talked about not wanting to, uh, repose fees and fines and everything. And, and, you know, you can't, you know, we have a speed trap where, you know, some communities live by typically, we don't do that. But, I mean, some of the things that are in there about registering dogs and getting a city license, uh, so you know, that's, in other cities I've paid those numerous dollars. Where here, we seem to avoid that. We, I mean, if we're gonna do this, we've got, we need to do it right and it's gonna need a funding source. You mentioned that Good Shepherd is full or whatever. We're gonna have to build, uh, polling pens somewhere.
Why don't you go back to that other document I put up as a second document?
Well, I, I think if we enter into an agreement with Good Shepherd, they're gonna pay them, okay, this one? Regardless whether they're full or what they are.
The second one.
This is the first one. That's the second one. And this is the third one. And this is a public ordinance.
You had it up on there, it's, this one that says, that page.
Yeah, it's the top of this one.
I have a page out there about animal, animal control costs and, and funding.
It's the top of the third document.
Which I kind of, I, after I read Ken's article, I thought, um, just did some thinking about it. And if we have a part-time animal control officer just serving on an absentee basis, but not necessarily with regular hours, right? You, you could, you could get by with paying them fifteen dollars an hour. If they worked sixteen hours a week, it's only twelve thousand a year, uh, only, but, I mean-
Well, that's why I said it was part of the-
Also, Shepherd, Good Shepherd will only be our first choice, I think, because that seems to be a reasonable option, a good option and reasonable fee.
And I don't think, I think if we have an inter-local agreement, then they can't refuse us.
But there are two other rescue organizations, Happy Valley in Beryl and Pitter Patter Junction in Ring Forest that might, we could work out agreements if Good Shepherd wasn't available.
This would be, these would be things we'd work out when we sit down with Cole and try to negotiate it.
Sure.
Whether we need that or not. And he has not said that they would not furnish, you know, collection, somebody on to do, but-
Okay, but that, that's what we need is someone to do it. We're not gonna do it for free though.
And the, the one in Eureka, and, and in most cases, every place, the, the animal control officer is, is part-time. And whether it's on a per pickup or hours or whatever, you know, that's something you negotiate. But it's, it's doable. And we just have to see whether we have sufficient, there's no way that you're gonna offset this. You know, I guess you could impose penalties for, you know, somebody reclaiming their animal. But I, I don't, I don't know, I, I don't know.
Well, in that regard, I think if Good Shepherd has my dog and I go get him because I didn't control him, I'm liable for that hundred and seventy-five dollars, not the city.
But that would probably go to-
It would go to them.
Well, we would like to check the good service for the, Good Shepherd for the services, but we collect the money for it.
A reimbursement. Again, though, you're not gonna get sufficient revenue to offset total costs.
I did a rough figuring here, if we charge five dollars a license or for registration, you call it registration or license.
Yeah.
But if you charge five dollars, how many dogs do you figure there are out here?
A lot.
Nearly one per household, right? We got sixteen hundred households. I figure five thousand dollars at least, that would offset some of our costs.
If everybody's up front and brings in their fee.
And that's at a low, the lowest registration cost anybody would have in any city, five dollars. Some of them are ten.
Yeah, yeah. Would we have a, a city tag then that they'd have put on?
Yeah.
It would be, it would be, no, I, I'm sure those could be had for a minor amount of money. That would identify the dog at least if it was, you know, running-
Good Shepherd never do any spay, spay and-
Yeah, they spay everything.
Yeah, they've got a very, they got a-
And the other thing, the, Good Shepherd, you know, Eureka doesn't do anything with cats. Good Shepherd, I, I didn't really wanna pursue it too, the longer I talked to that guy, the, the less respect I had for him, okay? Cause that pretty much said cats go in a bag. I, and I can't support that.
Wow.
I haven't heard any issues with stray cats being problematic out here.
Well, it's from strays, yeah.
There are a lot of them.
I mean, there are strays, but they're not problematic, they-
No, well, yeah, they're only problematic people, they come to people's houses and they try to do something with them. They, you know, they wanna take care of them or they wanna give them to somebody and it, with Good Shepherd, we could work out something. And they would, they said with feral cat populations, they would come in, collect them and span them and then put them back in their natural habitat if you want, or if it-
Will they do that with wild pigs?
Wild?
Will they do that with wild?
Wild pigs, yeah.
I was gonna say, our environment in Holiday Island with the bobcat population, I don't think we have a feral cat problem. I mean, that's the reality.
I believe all the options back when we-
The only thing I've seen with cats is people trying to find the owners of the cat and stuff. So when you're there again, you could require a registration so it would be a, but I don't see many cats with collars. Anyway, uh-
I know, there's also a, an ordinance I stuck out there that's from the city of Cabot. That was a fellow I met at the Arkansas Municipal League Conference in, in January. And he's a animal, um, I think he runs their shelter too. And he's, he's a really neat guy and he, he helped them write their ordinance and a lot of other cities write their animal control ordinance such that it's, um, it respects the animals.
Well, with, if you, you know, like Eureka, they got their own shelter and, and then you get involved with all kinds of problems. I don't wanna see us get into it.
I don't see us doing that either.
So if we can, you know, partner with Good Shepherd, and I think, I think it's a very reliable and resolving our problem. And, uh, when I talked to Cole yesterday, he said, just let him know he'd be glad to sit down with anybody and plan out, you know, what we could do. And he gave us some directions in, in the ordinances and the ordinance of grading also.
One of the documents mentioned something about wildlife.
Yeah, that's the Cabot ordinance that I put out there, cause it has virtually everything you'd want. We don't want all of that stuff in there. But it does have a lot in there to choose from.
Feeding deer.
I don't, I didn't, I didn't read it all, so I'm not-
I don't know. That's a state law.
What is?
State law against people who are deer.
We, we, they better expand the jails and use horses here.
Yeah, cause they got a lot of deer feeding the deer.
The only state law I've seen is you can't put feet out to track deer so you can shoot them.
Well, this has to do with the, the-
Wasting disease.
Oh.
It's a game and fish thing.
I know they don't want to feed the deer.
If you're in a waste, if you're in a control zone for chronic wasting, it's illegal to feed the deer. Imperal quality is-
If you guys, if you guys wonder if you're gonna get a lot of crap going, let's talk about deer because that, I've sat through a lot of those on, I know, you, I mean, let's stick with animals in the stats.
Okay, who wants to, uh, draft, my, my recommendation would be that we draft an ordinance, pass an ordinance, but make it effective January first so that we can include it in next year's budget and have the funding lined up.
I'd be glad, if you want to meet with Cole.
Uh, set up a time, we can meet with him.
Again, you know, you're, you're the only other person that can go, I thought we could now take two of us.
Uh, no, we don't want to spend it letting that.
No. But I, but I know Cole, so. I, you know, I think, I think we, we just need to see how far they're willing to go, you know.
Cole was also recommended by Mike, we would, we'd get him to-
Does Cole know anybody that would be interested in the other job that would-
Well, yeah, that's why, that's why we're gonna have a conference looking is to see, you know, to solve-
I would think that's the, the harder, harder puzzle is finding somebody to actually do it.
Well, I, I tried to get the guy from Eureka, if you, with proximity, if you go beyond that, then you got a lot of dragging pain involved and-
Well, there might be a retired person around here that would wanna do that.
All you gotta do is, you know-
Dog lover? Perhaps so?
Start advertising it.
Dog lover with a truck needed.
We'd have to have more than a truck, you'd have to have-
All you got, you, all you gotta have is kennels, you do portable kennels.
Well, you also have to have a long ham.
Long ham, you don't have some recent-
You don't have to have a special built truck.
There's a couple of dogs out there, I don't know.
I think a dart gun would, would satisfy that. Anyway, I, I know exactly where some of these dogs are and I know what they're like and I would not wanna be the animal-
Now you've got another job, you're the mayor, dog catcher.
There you go.
Well, you're gonna, you're gonna.
You got a truck, man.
I don't.
I said Dan's got a truck.
Yeah. Well, I, I got a kennel out here.
I think we got a problem, I do, we do have a problem out here and the only solution is enforcement of some sort.
Yeah. It's been a problem and it was a problem twenty years ago.
Yeah, it's gotten worse though since then.
I don't think.
Maybe it's just because.
I don't think it's any worse, it is, you just got utilization and, um, based on social. Uh, if you wanna do that, I'll go ahead and set up a meeting with Cole.
It's totally, see what our parameter is. Are you volunteering to draft the ordinance?
I'd be glad to.
Okay.
If you said, if you go along with the premise that we wanna keep it at a minimal. Can we, can, can you just do it by section, I mean? Can we do it by section, like put together things, gather most of it?
You can choose the sections if you want.
Cause dogs are the bigger problem as far as public safety. Uh, the, the, the one I looked at from Eureka Springs is well documented, you know, segmented. Okay. I mean, it's.
I, I would go so far as to say our animal control ordinance at this point is gonna be exclusively about dogs. That's the only problem we have, so.
Don't go crazy.
It's not the only problem, but it's the only problem as far as public safety. Feral cats can get to be a problem. Well, it's not the issue, it's not a bigger issue as dogs. We have same problem with them people dumping them though, so. That's true. And, um.
Okay, why don't we move on then to Jerry, why don't you, uh, this will be an update as much as anything about broadband.
Yeah, I'm, you know, I'm in the forest meeting and we're to the point of, uh, we crafted this survey, uh, you can call up the website.
Let's go. There you go.
Where do I go from here, Jerry? Where do I go from here?
The bottom. It's probably a deal of, of laptop.
Is this a toolkit or working on this?
You put in, show you the survey. It's right there.
You can type online.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thi- this is a, a survey and, uh, you've also got a document of a, a mailer and an insert that we can disseminate to some form. Uh, it basically asks about what, what you're, what you're paid for, with whom, what speed you're paid for, what speed you're getting. And we're gonna send, disseminate ten thousand in Carroll County and use that as the basis along with anecdotal letters from people, just like we did with that first grant of, of the issue here of, because of the typography. People might live, you know, two blocks from the end of the cable line and, you know, yes, it's available to you, but it'll cost you eight thousand. One, one gentleman was quoted fourteen thousand. We're gonna do it as a Carroll County, uh, issue, uh, state has seven hundred and fifty million dollars in federal funding. The grants that we applied for before, set up there by Ace Hutchinson and his, uh, two million dollar consultant. This new broadband director has tossed all that out. So I think it's easy to play field for Carroll County to get, uh, some funding. Rodney Ballen's gentleman that was kind of a consultant to us, he just, he just, they finally got the check. They got a seven and a half, seven point four million dollar grant for Harrison, do you remember the fiber there? So. The main thing that we need to do is, uh, figure out how we're gonna disseminate this survey. The timetable is that we need to get it out by the end of June, get it back before the end of July and to analyze the results. Deadline for submitting the grant to the county. It's in late August.
So has Carroll County Collaborative already mailed out this postcard because it has a June fifteenth return?
No, but in fact, that's, that was, that, uh, went down to the, yeah, that, that was, that, that in the Spanish edition was finalized yesterday.
Okay.
And, uh, I mean, it's across the board on how people are doing it. Uh, those that, uh, have utilities that mail out bills are gonna leave a little insert. Those that don't, uh, that, I think that's a mailer.
Yeah, this is a postcard.
Yeah, that's a postcard.
And this, this survey is the same content, just on a flat piece of paper.
Yeah. And that, that in the Spanish edition. So we've got various options.
This is the online version of the same information.
Yes.
Except that that postcard didn't have Cox on it, did it?
No, it, it says, who's your current provider, fill it in.
Yeah, but then how is the internet delivered? I was looking at that and do we have fiber optic or don't we, or?
We don't.
I don't hear. I didn't think so.
We've got a fixed wireless.
Ours is coming, ours is coming on copper on traditional telephone lines.
I'm not sure an average person would know how to answer that question.
No, that, that, that was another point that I wanted to raise about this. It's the life, the library, library, Mark, the library. Alabama, uh, director, uh, for the county system, uh, i- i- has been working with us. And she's volunteered for her, uh, assistants, uh, in their computer labs that they have at the various locations, uh, will assist people in filling out the survey and.
Well, why didn't they just word it for you to understand this? I'm an IT person and I don't even understand it, Jerry.
It's a government agency. That's why you can't understand it.
Well, couldn't Carroll County Collaborative have reworded it? Do we have to use those words?
What?
That I don't know.
I mean, it says things like DSL, do you know if you get DSL? No? I don't know what Cox falls under, is it optic cable, is it traditional telephone line?
How is it, how do you get your data in your house?
I, I wouldn't know which choice to put for Cox.
Cox is coax cable.
No.
They don't have that option.
It's telephone lines, folks.
Yeah.
It's coming over your telephone service. There's a, there's a cord coming off the pole that comes to your house, it hits a box and they hook onto that to bring your, into your home.
It's not telephone line.
There's a separate box for Cox.
It's coax cables, let that be around that.
But it's the telephone line that's connected to the Cox box that brings it into your house. Well, how do you suppose the signal gets into your Cox box on your house?
It comes off that coax cable, it's on the telephone.
It doesn't come in through the telephone line port.
It ain't telephone.
It's a separate cable. Okay.
They'll act you in answer.
I know it's attached to the handle somewhere. But do I have to tell the question?
Sure. So for most people, number two probably won't get marked properly.
That's right, that's what I'm saying.
Well, I will take that back to the group.
And what speed of service do you pay for? I don't have a clue. I don't even know where to find that.
It's on your bill.
That makes it too complicated.
I know, but that's the answer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think an average person could.
I went online and looked at our Cox account that was on there, we're paying for two fifty and we're getting three hundred.
And that's what, that's my last report from my system said too. When it's up. When it's down, again, zero.
Yeah, there you go.
Especially like how often they get this.
Yeah.
Eight, ten in the morning, it's not because everybody's on there checking their emails and.
The bandwidth suffers.
Well, I know that, that cable that Cox comes in is coax and it's analog.
I'll, I'll address that with them, but the, the other issue is that, I mean, I don't know how to solve. People don't know what they're paying for, what to get.
But that's the point of the survey is.
I don't know. What would you ask? Linda, educated, IT person can't tell you what she's paying for.
Put it parentheses, it's on your bill.
Well, where do I find it?
The problem.
I bet you if you look at your Cox bill, you won't find any of that information on the bill.
I think you find the speed.
Yeah, my speed's on the bill.
Yeah, I think so.
It is, not the rest of it is.
That, that's, that's how the.
Most of us don't even get a bill anymore, so.
Right.
Well, yeah, ours are correct.
You don't know where to find your bill.
I guess we don't, I don't get a bill anymore, I just get a, yeah, but in your card, emails.
Well, it's been my concern from day one on this, uh, you know, data collection thing. That, that doing it by mail is not gonna be very effective. The number one problem, you know, we're asking out right now is that most people aren't gonna understand the questions and won't know where to find the answers. And, uh, secondly, uh, just getting people interested in responding to a mail survey. You know, if they, if they don't have a beef with what, you know, you know, every time they turn on their TV, their TV show comes in and when they wanna send an email, their email works, that's all they care about. You know, my interest from day one has been much more of those people in Holiday Island here that have no service at all. Because they're a hundred yards away from the last Cox line that was put in.
Well, that, that's why the anecdotal, uh, affirmation would be some help. But, I mean, it, it, it will cost, trying to figure out how, how you can, what might. It's a sin. Morning Bruce. You mentioned before Dan, right, the door, I mean, I don't think that's.
It's a thing.
Some, some things that, that, that I, I've, I've, uh, mattered about, uh, is maybe setting up some computers in the bar room and having a town hall or meeting that people phone. Go through those, uh, or do it, send the postcard. I don't know how, how you get. A lot of people can, a lot of people can do the, the online service, but if you don't have.
You're not gonna get anybody that doesn't have.
And somebody made the point, and it's, it's a valid one, that even people that don't have internet, they have T-Mobile, uh, hot, hot, and they're, 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 they're on Facebook and everything. Is to put that survey on Facebook. There, there, it may, it may not be, that that's true to Holiday Island, but, but most people that say they don't have internet, check Facebook. But the main, the main thing that their, 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 the survey shows is the cost of internet, the reliability, the access. And, uh, so, uh, we've had every month and we had, uh, yesterday and, and Tuesday. Uh, we had the IT person from Mercy Hospital in Berryville talking about the, uh, healthcare department, it is telemedicine. I think it was the month before, we had the, uh, school superintendent from Eureka, uh, Berryville superintendent, had a conflict he couldn't. But anyway, that's the focus of, of taking this survey to show that it's people paying high prices for slow speed, limited access and the implications to healthcare, education, uh, emergency services and agriculture. Next month, we've got the, uh, something with Tyson to come in.
Do we know where the dead spots are in Holiday Island?
Yeah, there's a, two big, right there, right, see those maps? Don't you recover the maps?
There weren't big enough that you could even.
I, I know.
See Holiday Island on them. Yeah. Or much less of.
I'm gonna print out.
I'm afraid that the, that the state data is very generalized and it's gonna, it's not gonna show dead spots in Holiday Island. It's gonna show Holiday Island as generally having.
And how did they determine dead spots?
Um, if you.
How did they map the dead spots?
Yeah, that, well, I don't know if they did, that's what my question.
Yeah.
Because those are the underserved people.
Well, you know, how did they know those locations? The previous survey?
Cox knows where they quit running cable.
Yeah, but did they give it up to, to the people wanting to?
We have a list, we have a list of every address in Holiday Island, every occupied address. You know, every improved block, you know, in Holiday Island. You know, what would be great is if we could determine whether or not Cox is available at every one of those addresses.
Bingo, you got it.
And I don't know how to do that other than door, door to door or get on the phone because, uh, Cox isn't gonna have that kind of, uh.
And they're so expensive, a lot of people don't want it anymore anymore.
The answer is you can survey for that from the roadside, you look at the telephone pole and down twelve feet, fourteen feet from the ground is the cable. And you can see if that cable is on the pole that has power going to a facility, if it is, it's available for that facility. Will they use it or not, but you can survey that by driving seventy miles to Holiday Island. So when you go around the corner of Appaloosa, you see the telephone pole behind my house and the wire ends, so the three residents on the end don't have cable service. You can mark it, not available.
We don't have poles.
Well, okay, I don't know how you get your cable there.
I don't know.
But you run it around North Street.
If it, if it's underground, then it's, it's probably there.
I think, you know, they, they.
Look, look for the green boxes on the corner of the lot, yeah.
Well, they lay, I know they do. You know, people that have underground utilities probably have fiber optics.
No, I've got underground utilities, I don't have fiber.
Well, they.
All of Holiday Island up to.
Well, they laid fiber optic up there sometime, I don't know, I don't know who put it down or where it's thrown, but.
Up to my place, but.
Seventies would, the seventies would have been pretty early for fiber optics to be available.
Yeah, but they, they were, they laid fiber optics up there the last couple of years.
Not, not on Holiday Island.
Not on Holiday Island, right.
They would never have done that.
They didn't lay any cable in my, in my yards.
Two, three years ago.
Well, they didn't.
They didn't.
Well, up here.
They did out here.
It was wood stowed.
That was AT&T that was grinding up rock out here to lay fiber optic cable.
So what it is, what's it for, I don't know.
It's dead cable. It's, they had money to invest, so they laid fiber optic cable, that's what, that's what Rodney Ballen said. There's dead cable all over the country because
Yep.
the, the, the companies had money to invest, so they laid fiber optic cable and, but they don't use it.
Well, coax cable is not, is not broadband.
Well, it meets the definition of.
I'm getting two hundred service over my coax.
What's, what's the requirement? Oh, it used to be a hundred up and a hundred down.
It's a. I'll just write it down.
I think it's a hundred megabit.
It's a hundred down, twenty-five up.
Is that still, is that still what the standard that the state is shooting for?
Yeah.
That everybody gets at least that?
How much?
A hundred down and twenty-five up, what?
Hundred megawatt.
Megabits. We're getting three hundred down and ten up.
Yeah, I think that's what mine is.
So, so the answer, back to the survey Jerry, when you wanted the speed, was that speed what they've been promised on their contract with their provider or what they're actually getting?
There's two questions, one, what are you getting? And what are you getting?
How do you know what you get?
Well, I mean, on my phone, I've got a speed test. I can, you know, I'm slow and I can do that speed test.
And that's asking for what is done.
Is it reliable is all it asks for?
When it doesn't ask about a.
Reliability doesn't.
And ours is only ten.
Well, here, are you consistently getting the speed you're paying for, yes or no?
Are you?
Consistently getting the speed you're paying for, yes or no?
And nobody knows how to even do that test, so.
Most people don't.
And quite frankly, you know, some people that have trouble with their internet because they're trying to stream movies or something like that, and they're getting a lot of screen freeze. It may be because of their modem, not, you know, their wifi modem, not because of Cox.
No.
Well, it was discussed yesterday that these T-Mobile hotspots and other hotspots that people are using are not considered reliable internet, so they're discounted. They're shown as lack of access to internet.
So really, the only option here is Cox that, that they would consider.
That's correct. And this program is specifically and exclusively fiber optics. And it is a hundred and then twenty-five or.
It would be so easy for us to just be able to say, nobody in Holiday Island has fiber optic, period. End of, end of survey, hundred percent non-compliance.
Nineteen lots improved, no, then zero service.
Right, because there is no, there's no fiber. Between Pat, Pat and I, we've eliminated this map, and these maps, the red is zero percent fiber.
I think zero, fifty, and a hundred, I, I don't have enough light to me.
Yeah, it is zero, fifty, and a hundred, and it just depends. I can't read the cities.
This is one hundred percent fiber optic, this is what we see.
Well, I think it's fiber copy out, it's just. Where in Carroll County is, no, it is fiber internet available.
Now, there's a, their, their goal and their measurement system aren't necessarily tied together. Their goal is to provide fiber optics to every underserved person in Arkansas, and yet their measurement standard is if you're getting, you know, a hundred, twenty-five and a hundred from COAX, that's good enough. You don't qualify. You know, if their goal is to get fiber optics to everybody, then that should be the performance measure.
It's to get fiber optic internet.
Yeah.
Right.
So, is Rodney's, what he was going to do to bring internet to the county, was that fiber optic thing?
Yes, and that's what, that's what he just got the grant, seven point four million to do. I don't know how much Harrison. See, he got, the first grant we applied for was for that initial study, seventy-five thousand. He got that for Berryville, and did the engineering study and everything, but never got funding to do it.
Sounds like they may get in funding a bit to your office.
Well, they, they've not sent out very much money to the right people because there's, this latest round of federal money, seven hundred and fifty million. That's three quarters of a billion.
They've, they've been sitting on that money for a couple of years already, and they're hanging on to it like it's theirs.
That, that's the thing, and I, Dan, I don't know if you were there when that Lou McNamara who gave a report last year, it was Jason Hutchinson, Jason Hutchinson, he's a provider just like Rodney is. Gave him a two million dollar contract to assess, you know, what needs to be done and to start doling out this money. Long story short, he's the one that, he never did do a meeting here as expected. That when he talked to Eureka, he said, you know, based on my assessment, y'all, y'all will never hit a dime here. Anyway, so when Jason Hutchinson left, they appointed a new consultant, and he's thrown out all of that. He's really pushing to try to get the money to where it needs to go. I remember what Dan's name is.
To Dan's point about the speed and the service, this test I just ran says we have a download speed of thirty-six megabit in this office right now. It's not necessarily what Cox is providing, but that's what we're getting off our connection.
That's out of a hundred, the big place.
It should probably be over two hundred. But this is their connection, so this is what our wifi and the repeaters and whatever else is processing. Yeah, we're getting upload of twenty, which is real good, but download going thirty-six in this office on this connection. It's not necessarily what they're providing. And that's from here there, is when you run these tests, you have to be careful about, if I hit run again, where do I hit run again?
I just, I just ran one.
Yeah.
I'm getting a hundred and one down, and.
That's your wifi connection, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Over your phone, not, not to the router here.
Yeah, I'm getting one hundred and one down, twenty up.
So, when you run these tests, if you're running a wifi test on Cox, be sure that you're sending it to a non-Cox connection. Because it's always better if it's to a Cox, Cox to Cox runs really well.
See, I hit Cox, I'm running on the other option.
There's somebody in Arizona. I just picked an address in Arizona, an ISP in Arizona, so it has to go through multiple ports. When I'm at home, I connect to an outfit in Sioux City, Iowa, where I know it's not Cox.
Well, Jerry's checking that, you know, one last, one last comment on the, the survey and the postcard and everything else. By August, by sometime in August, Carroll County has to present to the state one summarized countywide report.
With this kind of information, obviously.
Yeah, so we, we really can't go out and start soliciting different information because it won't be compatible with the summarized report. The data won't do them any good. So, our task is, if the collaborative is committed to these specific questions, then our task is to try to figure out how to get the best possible data, how to get the best possible results with this survey, the most accurate results. And I'm thinking that the postcard isn't going to do it. We'll have to send out a different mailing, the flat sheet mailing, along with an instruction sheet. That says, you know, this is why we're doing it, this is where you look for, you know, for the answer to this, and otherwise, I, you know. I, 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 I don't imagine that twenty percent of the people in Holiday Island would be able to fill that out.
You're going to make, have to make a case for them to actually do it. You're going to have to tell them what's the benefit to them to do it.
I think, Dan, what you said a few minutes ago, the answer's right here. Carroll County is way underserved with fiber slash broadband numbers. Zero is our answer, we just need to know how many residences we have with zero service.
Yeah, except that that's not, that's what I say, the, the states, their, their goal, their stated goal, and their, and their measurement system aren't compatible.
Okay.
It's, it's like saying, you know, we want everybody in Arkansas to have a gallon of milk, and we want you to go out with this yardstick and see how many gallons of milk we need.
See previously.
And, so they're collecting data on a performance measure, which is, you know, twenty-five up and a hundred down. That's, they don't say anything about whether or not, I mean, they are collecting data as to whether it's fiber or DSL or whatever, but, but that's not, you know, the state, in the meetings that I've been in, in, the state never asked that question. They never asked, do you have cable, or do you have fiber optic cable? They only asked what your upload download speed are.
Yeah, that's, that's when we put out the, you know, they had a deal where you could go to Webbs' and do a test. I don't know where the man like to do that. But those first coverage maps were based on the.
I know, but I don't know exactly what it means.
Those first coverage maps.
That's what I said.
This one again.
Jerry's trying to make a point here, guys.
I don't see the way. I was just saying that the first coverage maps, back when we did that first grant application, was based on information provided by the provider, and is, is.
That's where Cox said they covered all of Holiday.
That's right, because it is available.
Yeah.
But now, it's, you know, to determine that, we're trying to ask the people of, you know, do you have internet, what, what are you paying for, and, you know, is fiber available? So, this is going to give some legitimate coverage.
My fear is, is that only the people that are very computer savvy, and consequently probably have already upgraded their service to something very acceptable, they're the ones that are going to respond, and the people that are truly underserved won't respond because they won't understand it or whatever.
Here's, here's the map for Holiday Island. It shows green for everything, except for one little piece over here on Lakeside, and some pieces around, around the golf course. So it's just not true. I mean, this corner right here, right, this, this corner right now here has no service, right here. There are three houses there.
What's the purple? What is purple indicating?
Outside.
Because that's us right up there in that.
I don't see the legend.
On that island, go back to that, you did too.
I'm trying to get there.
Okay, now, so that purple up, right up there above the white, that's us.
Yeah, that's where he lived, isn't it?
So what does that say?
I can't find the legend.
There's no legend.
The, the red, yellow, the gray is all we have. Well, the lake is also purple, so if that tells you anything.
See, that would be all of Andy's Drive on the north side.
It's across the lake, you know.
That's, that one circle is, purple circle's Rocky Top, so.
Right.
You know, it doesn't mean water.
But this corner right here does not have service. This is Appaloosa, that overlook, you come off of Beaver, and the overlook looking out over the lake. These three houses, these three houses right here don't have service, because the pole is right here where it ends.
Oh, I see now, up there.
I wonder if the purple is supposed to indicate not, 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 not included in the survey area because theoretically there's no houses there or something.
Except you got some areas.
All of Beavers is in purple. Then, well, this isn't the, this is.
Is there not a legend?
I don't find a legend on the map.
On your, on the one you provided, red was zero, yellow was fifty, and red was a hundred.
Red is zero, fifty, and a hundred.
But purple, they didn't have a purple, no purple on the legend.
No purple in this one.
I still think the answer is zero.
Yeah, it's fiber.
And you're talking about broadband, broadband is fiber.
Here we go. Purple is RDOF wired. RDOF wired. RDOF wired, or RDOF wireless, but it's the dark purple that we are asking about.
All right, somebody Google what RDOF means. Google knows everything.
Rural Digital Opportunity Fund.
Rural Digital Opportunity Fund.
Yep. It's an FCC initiative designed to inject billions of dollars into the construction and operation of rural broadband networks.
Very good.
So, we've got that?
Bullshit.
She wanted me to hire her.
She can, she can be our Googler.
Interesting, over here, I don't know where this data comes from, but it says three hundred and forty-six households is a hundred and seven miles to deploy fiber.
That data comes from Cox, I think.
Arkansas broadband, broadband coverage.
Really, it's false information. The reality is, within Holiday Island, there is no broadband.
According to their definition, there is. They've defined it as certain speed is available to your household.
Well, then why do they call it broadband initiative?
Because they're trying to say they want to take care of the underserved, that's their initiative. So they're trying to identify who's covered and who's not, so they can decide where they're going to spend the money to have the biggest impact. And because we have a lot of coverage, we're probably not going to be very high on that list.
That's right.
Our, these purple areas, Beaver's going to get all the money.
Our, our.
Right there.
Our, our objective, or our task right from the beginning, was to challenge Cox's data with our own data. Because that's who provided that information.
I think then we ought to go, Glenn's plan is have, have deployed men in trucks to go off every street and figure out where Cox ends and how many houses are impacted by that. Well, except we have underground, we can't tell.
Well, there are, there are many streets that are underground, right?
Right. Underground is just up on, by the cul. The bottom of the island, the rest of us are all.
Which of the island is underground, I think? Is, is the island underground?
Just the bottom.
Yeah, just where it's flat.
And I think you could assume that all of Holiday Island is, could be served by Cox, which is.
So it is, well, I, I finally magnified these enough where I can read them.
Except for that red spot right in the middle, which is, is Rocky Top Circle.
Or the name. But here, here's the criteria that they're looking at. Like on this one, that's up there. First says where in Carroll County is fiber internet available? And that's the red and green, yellow areas, and although it doesn't say Holiday Island. although it doesn't say Holiday Island, if you know the geography, we're in Hawaii, which means we don't have fiber. Next one says where in Carroll is cable internet available?
What's going on?
Said that that. And then, uh, the other one is where in Carroll County is DSL internet available? Maybe there may not be any reading there. And then, very, uh, in the middle, far right, where in Carroll County is fixed wireless internet available? Yeah, that's ninety-nine percent of the area. But the key is gonna be, because this is for fiber, that first map shows that, uh, that we don't, nobody has our.
This map says that there's a little piece of ground between Holiday Island Drive and Hawk, and, you know, whatever. It shows some fiber available there.
Yeah.
Little tiny piece. And then the underground, if it's red, what you were saying for, for sources that fiber was available on this piece of ground.
Well, it may be, but you know, Charles Cox and tell them to hook you up.
Right, that's Cochise to whatever.
I don't think any of the Indian.
There aren't even any houses in that section.
Isn't that interesting?
That's, that's.
Says the fiber's out there.
That's, that's a big section of green space right there.
Yeah, it says fiber's available, if red's right code, then down along.
Yeah, but all those people in Indian Hills back there do not have cable available.
And that, La Quinta, that, there, that's, that's, that's the strip between Highway twenty-three and the...
It's the houses that are right on the highway.
But there aren't any houses on the highway.
Yeah, there are, there's four or five running through here.
Oh, yeah.
You have to look at the specific, specific map, because, uh...
All the houses are on the north side of La Quinta. The south side.
Oh, you're right.
The south side of La Quinta is a, is a fence and then the street and the highway.
You're right, you're on the north side.
That's all just, you know, mulled grass.
Yep, I, great.
So what are we trying to do?
We're just trying to understand the data they have.
And that's golf course on the other side there, isn't it?
Yeah.
There are houses between that. There's houses on both sides of the golf course.
For all practical purposes, they're saying that all of Holiday Island has white, uh, you know, hardwired internet.
Yeah, that's, that's why it shows, it's bicycle.
Oh, we know that that's not true.
It's available for price for certain persons.
And that, that, the, the guy from the state even said that, that, that that was one weakness in their, in their data collection system, is that, um, regardless of, it's, it is regardless of cost.
Yeah, that, that, that's the point of the survey, and we may need to change the language if we can, if you have some suggestions, I, I don't, I'm not.
Oh, and this is a county survey?
Yes, Carroll County, and so what, and our purposes to plan. They need to just determine if their, if their goal is to put a hundred percent fiber across the state, and...
It's a, it, the, going back, back a step or two, the first time that they went through the state and tried to, and had a, a broadband initiative with fiber, they divided the whole state into like four sections or something like that. And they, they, they did a pocket project here and a pocket project there, but there was no real ultimate goal of doing anything, it was just a hot, just a hodgepodge. So this time around, it was like a seventy-five county initiative, right? Every county is supposed to be a project. And so every county, by August, every county in Arkansas has to submit to the state their county data about what they need in their county.
And it has to conform to those parameters, those numbers.
And then they will use that to try to prioritize where the grant money goes.
How are you ever gonna get that, those numbers? Well, it's not really possible.
Yeah, the best served.
That's a goal.
The best served areas in the state will get most of the money, because they have the resources to manipulate the data to show that they need it.
Call those counties and ask them how they're collecting the data, that's the key.
Well, I think, I think they're all, well, I don't know how they're collecting the data, but they're, they all should be trying to collect the same data, because this is being.
You can't tell me those rural counties that are underserved that those people are gonna know how to fill out that form. Worse than us, I mean, they are more handicapped than us on being able to fill out that.
The Carroll, first of all, you know, Carroll County Collaborative is not working independently of the state, I mean, they're being guided, they're being kind of directed as to what data they're looking for, and, you know, now, they're not gonna tell you how to get that data. That's the part that's up to us.
The state will.
Right.
So they're gonna extrapolate what data they get into, because they're not gonna get, you know, the response level is not gonna be a hundred percent. So they're gonna have a huge.
They've never been searched.
Are the, are the surveys coming back anonymous from people? You don't know what happens?
Postcards are anonymous. Postcards are anonymous.
Hey, we could all get together here someday and fill out fifteen hundred postcards.
Absolutely, there's a reason why we couldn't.
Uh, yes.
Public media.
You're not gonna get filled out in another way.
I get, I get.
We have a drink or meeting though, twenty of us. I think it's Rodney and or Sandy, and Don is here.
The county is us.
I think having Sandy here would be the best for Holiday. Sandy is the one that really has, she's the boots on the ground as far as what data like things.
I'll call Sandy and see if she can come.
Why don't we do that, and then take the next step? Okay, our takeaway here is that, uh, Jerry is gonna call Sandy Martin, who is really the brains behind this, and have her come to our, um, meeting, into our city council meeting in two weeks, and tell us where we're, where we're at with the county and what everybody else is doing.
I mean, that would be, that, that would be ten, that would be way.
Yeah, there was two problems, how to fill it out and then how to collect it from people.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah.
Yeah, Pat just had a point that I was gonna bring up and didn't, uh, of getting individual groups, stacks of these surveys, once we get one that people agree, uh, like, uh, Eureka, Eureka, Berryville, the Green Forest, all their churches, uh, or most of their legitimate big churches are members of the, the ministerial, Carroll County Ministerial Alliance. Maybe those churches that agree to do the surveys, their current.
And include groups like Hi-Hi and stuff, at their meeting, and they have a brief explanation of what this is, and, I mean, you know, if you just mail them out, if we got five to ten percent participation, I'd be shocked. And if we had every organization here that we can get cooperating to do it at one of their meetings, and have the people fill it out there with somebody assisting, we might get a better response as far as numbers than anything else we can do.
And like, like everything, you know, we're, we're, we're gonna, we know we're not gonna get a hundred percent participation, what we want is a statistically significant sample.
But ten percent would be statistically, or above, would be pretty reasonable.
Yeah.
That'd be a couple of hundred.
Yeah, that would be, I, I think that would be a good approach.
I, I'll get Sandy to come, to run you this.
Okay.
Yeah, I think even if they, if they don't wanna tweak the survey, then we could tweak it ourselves.
As long as the data is still compatible with their rollup when they try to merge, merge it all into one county or the one county.
You almost need to see exactly what the state is requesting.
Well, I think, I think you're a toolkit, I mean, it's, I mean, it's a step-by-step process.
Well, if you had a meeting, you're not gonna be able to get the upload and download speed.
Well, that's what the committee is trying to do, is to boil it down to the essential, uh, data that we need to gather.
That is a point of, of a meeting, you have trouble getting the first couple of questions answered, because it wouldn't have the availability, the members of their bill.
You're, you're talking about it to them, but are they gonna retain and get back to you? No.
Well, no, there, there are gonna be, a lot of people will just throw it in the trash, but, as Pat said, if we get, you know, a couple of hundred.
We could get two hundred or two hundred and fifty, that would be a, a reasonable sample that you could make a statistical analysis from, I mean, ten percent, usually your fifteen percent is, is enough to.
Well, I, you know, I'll also bring this up, if you do it at a Hi-Hi meeting, I mean, you only get.
No, I'm talking about not just, in addition to churches and robbery and.
I mean, if we're about to do a general mailing, I mean, we're gonna have to do that, do small groups.
If you do a general mailing, most people, it's gonna go in the trash.
You're gonna miss the underserved too. Because the underserved is not gonna be in those meetings.
I know, I'm just joking, but I mean, that would be the.
That's, that's, it's like you had a big.
I bet most of the unders, most of the served moved to areas that have internet.
What?
I would imagine most of the served people in Holiday Island live in areas with internet, like.
That's why, and that's why.
So you're gonna miss all the underserved.
Well, how, how, what, if you mail them something.
You're not gonna get it either, I know.
You're gonna get what?
You're not gonna get it either, by mailing.
No, I, I don't, you'd almost have to go in person, I don't think we're gonna do that.
I know, if you knew, it actually, it might be good, if you could target those areas that you knew didn't have internet service and just visit those houses and help them fill out the survey.
If it's by phone.
Well, you're, you're in the group.
Sorry.
All right, well, we got, you know, about ten minutes left, and I don't wanna exclude giving, um, ten, five whole minutes to talk about library.
Library.
Can we make it three?
Oh, yeah.
About ten minutes.
I will, but not right today. Anyway, um, we're trying to determine whether there's any interest in this, evidently not. I had several people who were supposed to come to this meeting and once, once here, but one other one left. Anyway, um, I'll just, little background, uh, I don't even know how many people, I would say seventy percent of the people on Holiday Island don't know it, but we have a quasi-library in the basement of the clubhouse. Yeah, we know it, is that where I get rid of my old books? Um, and, uh, I talked to the lady who takes care of that on, on a broadband voluntary basis. All the books in the library are donated, and what she does is she collects the donations, sorts them out, and figures out which ones might be beneficial, and she gives the rest of the Eureka Library to sell. There, there's no central, uh, thing. Listing available to tell you how to research books, they don't check them out, so if you go get a book and take it home and don't bring it back, that's fine too.
Was it under the umbrella of the library system?
Ah, no.
It's not.
No, it's totally about.
It belongs, supposedly it belongs to Hi-Cid, Hi-Cid gives it no funding. So there, there's, there's no equipment there, there, there's a cut, there are broke computers sitting there, so basically it's not functional, it's not a library, it's, it's just a.
It's our problem to understand.
Uh, I, and I guess there are, I mean, you know, it's, what kind of use it gets, I say minimal. I don't know, anybody here use it?
I used to.
I think I have.
I have, I've been up there. But I mean, the books have all got, you know, the books are all gotta be old.
I think they're popular novels, most of them.
If you can find what you're.
Yeah.
Well, they're on the shelves alphabetically by author.
By author.
Yeah.
They're arranged, and they're.
And people donate books to it, I know, I have in the past.
Anyway, um, I don't call it a library, it does, it does not, it does not provide typical library services for them, I mean, any, um, and I, I talked, when I talked to Lauren, he wants to get rid of it, because he wants to do something with that program, I don't know what. Anyway, uh, the other thing that, you know, that has bugged me for a long time, whether you know that or not, you pay a two mil property tax for a library. And I've paid that, I think, for thirty years, and best that I know, I've got nothing out of that. Uh, the only thing that I've been told is that, as a resident of Holiday Island, I can get a library card at the Eureka Library, and I have one, which I've never used.
And I have one in Berryville, which I use.
My wife goes to Berryville once, would, would take books back.
So, uh, I addressed that with the former director of Camel, which is Carroll-Madison Library, which I now felt, understand, I thought they ran the system, they do not. Carroll-Madison Library is an advisory board to the two counties that are in that. Carroll and Madison has their own, have their own library boards for the county. The libraries within those two counties are county functions. The libraries are not city libraries, they're county libraries, and Connie Doss explained to me that all the employees in the libraries are county employees, all the property belongs to the county, the building, everything in them belongs to the county. So they are not city libraries, which I initially thought they were, and I was wondering why there was no funding from the cities, and there, there is not. The libraries are totally funded from tax collections for the applicable counties, and, and I, well, I threw up, and the only, the County-Madison Library, they provide, they call it contractual services, that's forty-five thousand dollars for each of the county libraries in Carroll. They pay that to them for circulation and, but I don't know, I haven't narrowed it down to what all they are, anyway. Carroll County collects about between a million and a million, two, taxes every year, and distributes that to the three libraries, Three Force, Berryville, and Eureka Springs, and they all get equal distribution, there's nothing appropriated. There's, there's some incidental income that they get from other things, but basically they're getting about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to run their libraries.
Does that pay the salaries?
That's everything.
Okay.
And the budgets are prepared by each library, approved by the Carroll County Board, and, and there's, there is a Carroll County Board, and they, and she said there's, uh, some kind of an interboard for each of the libraries that, you know, that is, uh, they have really no administrative control, it's a, you know, I don't know. Um, so, and I've gotten budgets and all the information relative to the libraries, except I can't get the originating, originating document that tells you what the two mil property type is going to be for. Connie's still trying to find that, she gave me one where they were trying to increase it to, from two mils to three mils, and that failed. Uh, so I'm, I... it to, from two mils to three mils and that failed. Uh, so I'm, I, to find out all of those funds are supposed to be distributed and what they're supposed to support, I've got to find that original document, the, the original budget initiative. Unless, unless somewhere along the line, the county board has done something. But she seems to think, and I think that's probably true, we need to get back to the original ballot issue to find out whether we stand a chance of getting any funding. Um...
Who, who would, who could decide to put a library in another location?
You what?
You what?
Who could decide?
Who, who would make the decision to put a library in another...
That would probably be that county, the county, Carroll County Library Board.
I believe they appointed by the Corham Court.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw that recently.
Corham Court.
The Corham Court appointed somebody recently to the library board.
That's totally controlled.
Well, it's, it's a, it's a total county function.
Right.
Uh, and you know how well we've been received in the county so far?
Well, I mean, we, I, I think that, go ahead.
Well, I was gonna say, as far as I know, we've not been to the Corham Court to make a case on any...
As a...
Other than, uh, occasionally, uh, Jack Dean or somebody.
I, I give you the background and I said, you know, much of the research we have been doing also requires some help from our residents to put some pressure on the governing body to share some of these funds, which rightfully belong to Holiday Island.
How about a petition drive? That would show a, a...
But I think, you know, I think the next step would be, like Ken said, if...
I get the initiative, ballot initiative that would set up the, because if it specifically says those three entities...
Exactly.
Then we gotta go, we're gonna have to have another election probably.
Yep.
If it says to fund the libraries within the county of Carroll County, then it's up to that board to decide they wanna split it with us.
I talked to somebody yesterday who seemed to think they had knowledge about the, the library formation and how it was designed. And they suggested to me that it might be tied to school districts, that there was, could have been one library per school district. Because, um, there's one in Eureka, whereas if there's a school district, there's one in Green Forest, there's one in Berryville. Also in Madison County, um, I believe there's one in...
Hayneville.
Hayneville, yeah.
And St. George.
So you might find there's signed to school districts, in which case we have no chance.
Well, I need, well...
But I hope that's not the case.
I need to find that or, and Connie is working on it. So I, at this juncture, uh, I think, I, I need to find out who's on, uh, April, who said she was gonna be here, but really, she's not in our, not in the picture. Okay, she, I mean, it's, that's, it's the Carroll County Madison Library Group. Uh, they provide assistance to the existing libraries, which had, you know, we're not gonna be impacted by that at all. Uh, it would have no impact on us if we, if we got a library, then we would pay, pay them a fee for providing us services.
Now, Ken, one, one thing you might explore, again, experience in Oklahoma, they have, uh, uh, satellite branches of libraries in smaller towns.
Well, that's what they did. They did that in Madison, but...
Well, I mean, you know, we're starting from scratch. We just oughta ask for something. Uh, but anyway, they, they have a bookmobile and you can call and request a book from Eureka.
Well, I just, I just saw where Green Forest put in a bookmobile, but you gotta get past it. The problem right now is there are three libraries in Carroll County.
That's right.
And you ain't gonna, you ain't gonna get a bookmobile or anything unless there's some provision to go beyond those three.
Well, I, I would bet that that ballot initiative didn't say that this...
Well, they gotta find a ballot. They should have found out.
That's what I'm suggesting.
And so...
But I, I think there's not a chance in hell that they're gonna build a library in Holiday Island.
Well, you have to have the building first before you consider picking me alone.
But, I mean...
Uh, well, anyway, uh, I think right now until we find out what that, what, what the, you know, what the document that told them how they're going to, what they're gonna support and how they're, you know, how they're gonna divvy up the funds. Because there has to be something, because if, it's, it's totally three-way split. There, if you look that, if you look through the revenue, each, each library gets the exact same money.
And I think that, that being tied to the school district is of very high prob, probability.
Yeah, it's logical sense.
Well, you know, Connie's been helpful and, and then she, she's a woman. And I did not realize that, that, you know, that they are true, they are truly county entities. They run by the county.
I know that, but that's the...
And anyway, uh, I, I do not wanna give up on trying to get us a piece of the pie because taxation without representation is... And we will have a tea party.
Corham Engineer is not gonna let you throw tea into that.
No. Uh, Dr. Brown was here at my invitation. He's very interested in this. Ken, you got any insight?
Yeah, I've got about three minutes.
Yes, sir.
All right.
I can smell food cooking in the canyon.
Yeah, yeah. Ken Brown, I suppose, point, uh, I would support at least looking into what Ken is talking about. And maybe it's possible, maybe not. There's a room at the end of this building that might be a library. It's currently occupied by the city of Holiday Island. And it's a good one. But anyway, uh...
Right now, it is a storehouse of knowledge.
Thank you for, thank you for having a workshop today. Uh, you know, when Ken and Linda and Dan have been on the board, a longtime board of commissioners, and we used to have, the third Monday of the month was a workshop and the fourth Monday was a regular meeting. That has gone away. We've had two, I think, workshops in the last fourteen months. And what this does is give you, each one of you a chance to interact. And it's a three-hour meeting, but it was good because I heard from each one of you about items that are of interest here. Library, broadband, uh, animal control. Really important to me that you got a chance to, and you don't have to have the mayor say, okay, now, you know, Commissioner, so-and-so, you can speak now. It's just an open, nice conversation. Uh, the other thing would, uh, thank you for number eighteen on one of your codes about the RV trailers and the campers and the whatnot. When I came here sixteen years ago, you hardly ever saw one. Now I bet if you wanna count, there'd be seventy-five to a hundred in driveways and somewhere on the property. So I think you're really, uh, going on the right track there. Uh, I was also wondering, who would inspect short-term rentals? Would you have to hire another person to do this for you?
It would be the building inspector.
Pardon?
The building inspector.
Okay, great. Uh, and then, uh, home insurance. Uh, Lynn brought up about insurance and so forth. Thirty, uh, different companies here for roofing. One of the good things that the insurance company that I was with, uh, auto owners did, is they will not pay the final payment until everything is done to their satisfaction. We've got some siding damage on our home. It's been four months. Next week will be four months of storm. February fifteenth to June fifteenth. And, um, the insurance companies will not pay the final payment, at least mine, until all of this is done. We've got a window that's gonna be hard to replace and we've got siding damage. But the roof is fine, but they will not give up the last eleven thousand dollars. So thank for, uh, insurance companies, Pat, what you used to work for. And, uh, animal control, I really, I really like, uh, what Ken brought up about, uh, Good Shepherd are a great organization. If we could, uh, get moving on that, that'd be wonderful. Somebody who's bitten, bitten, and my dog has been bitten. Those of you who've been around a while are tired of hearing me say that. Uh, the last thing is on Cox. My friend Bill just occupied a home on, uh, Holiday Island Drive near Pat. And it was a brand-new home. Last year he occupied, he called Cox and he said, I'm moving about three blocks away. I want cable and internet. Twenty-five hundred dollars. Twenty-five hundred dollars. So he went with Hughes Satellite, whatever that is, Hughes Service. And it's not good. He's not happy with it at all. To run the cable that Lynn mentioned, this pole, twelve foot into his new home, twenty-five hundred dollars. That's really not service at all, you know. But, uh, anyway, I hope that this survey...
You can run a cable down that house.
I hope this survey would, uh, if we can get the right data, collect it from it. I like Pat's idea about having different groups. We could have ten this morning, you know, pull up that, right here at this meeting, but, uh...
If you get your friend to write a letter...
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, we're gonna have anecdotal support.
Okay.
And that's, I mean, we got several from the last round a couple of years ago.
Good.
But I mean, this was, this was even more egregious. It's on a lane, it's three through the town and three trees.
That makes no sense, cause Doug owns a place two houses up from me and he didn't have any trouble at all.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
He's only a hundred feet from his place.
It could be because it's on a, that house is on a undeveloped block up until the last year or two. And so there was no...
But there's development on either side of it.
Well, I might, and I've told this story before, that when we and Wade and me built our houses at the same time, we were told by Cox that there was no line there. It was gonna be twenty-five hundred bucks for each one of us to have a line run through our house. So apparently that price has stayed the same. But the thing was, so we went, uh, wireless for a year until we found out that there actually was a line running across our lot. And there was a pedestal on the corner of our lot.
Wow. Yeah.
Where we got...
But Cox didn't want you to do that, cause they wanted the twenty-five hundred. They didn't wanna tell you.
Or they didn't know.
Probably didn't know.
Or they didn't.
So Cox doesn't always know where their lines are.
All right. Uh, one last thing, and it's got one on the agenda, but, um, Chris, uh, is a wizard. Jeez. I shouldn't say wizard. She's a whiz. She's a whiz.
She's good at what she does.
She's good at what she does.
Oh!
I hope, I hope she doesn't resign after sitting through this.
Yeah.
She's on the clock.
But she stayed awake the whole time.
She, uh, she took the, um, I got, I got the, uh, most recent, uh, customer list from Carroll County Solid Waste. And, um, it, it actually was in two different databases. One was Auto Pay and one, okay. And then I took that GIS data that you downloaded, um, that has every address, where nine-one-one purposes has every address in Holiday Island identified where there's a structure at that address. And, um, I took, she took that database and she merged them to see how they compare. And there's only twenty-three addresses that don't show up on the Carroll County Solid Waste customer list. So it's not a, you know, at one time, we were looking at a list of three, four hundred people. It looks like it's a pretty short list of addresses where now we gotta figure out what's going on at that address. You know, do people actually live there and stuff like that. But it, it...
That sounds doable.
Yeah, it's, it's a pretty short list.
That doesn't sound correct.
I...
There's too many...
Sounds good.
They're not doing...
Well, I, I provided Carroll County Solid Waste with a list of all of the people that signed up for bag gags and stuff.
Oh, okay.
So they're, they're, they're included in there. They would, they would be checked off as being...
I don't know. Those twenty-three people must have a whole lot of trash that they filled that dumpster a few days.
Those are, those are, yeah. Okay, anything else?
Armed guards.
Move the adjourn. I think we're done. We have a motion to adjourn.
I seconded it.
And the second, we're all in favor of saying, uh...